Good evening. We're going to start now. Good evening. Welcome to the July 21st, 2025 Greensboro Planning and Zoning Meeting. My name is Catherine Magid, and I am the Chair of the Commission. If the other Commissioners would introduce themselves, starting from my right.
Betty Turner.
Warshay Downing.
Sandra O'Connor.
Mary Skeens.
Paul G. Gilmore, Senior.
Stu Nichols.
Thank you. And Commissioner Erica Glass will be joining us a little bit later. Members of the Commission are appointed by the City Council and serve without pay. The Commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each Commissioner normally visits each site prior to this meeting. All Commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. When speaking here tonight, please direct all questions and comments to the Zoning Commission only. The Chair or Commissioners will ask the staff or attorney to comment on the question. This meeting is being conducted in person and online and is being recorded and televised on the Greensboro Television Network, GTN, and the telecast is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. When a case is called that you are interested in, people wishing to speak by Zoom will need to use the raised hand function under the reaction button to be notified, noticed, and will be called upon in the order in which their hands were raised. If anyone participating online needs help with the Zoom during this meeting, People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. The procedure used at this public hearing is as follows. The planning staff presents background information and makes a recommendation. The applicant will present a short summary of how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Any Commission member may ask questions once the presenter has completed their presentation. The applicant and all other people in favor of the request share 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in opposition to the request share 10 minutes of speaking time. Then the rebuttal. Those in favor share five minutes of speaking time, and those in opposition share five minutes of rebuttal time. In an effort to run this meeting more efficiently, the Planning and Zoning Commission will reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition has been expressed to the Planning Department and the Commission members do not feel necessitates a discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda and will become the expedited agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation for those cases, and the applicant will have up to two minutes to address the Commission if they so desire to provide any information they want the Commission to know. After our deliberation, all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable or denied votes will constitute a final action, unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. All annexed ordinances receiving six or more votes will be favorably recommended and subject to a public hearing by the City Council. All ordinances receiving less than six will be subject to a public hearing by the City Council. Okay. Acknowledgement of the absence. Commissioner Peterson will not be with us tonight, and Ms. Glass will be arriving around 6:15. Now we need the approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the June minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye in raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, let's see, we're seven, uh, seven to zero. Now we need to have some insights from our City Attorney.
Thank you, Chair Magid. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear a number of rezoning applications and applications to establish original zoning related to annexations. I'd like to remind everyone that when the Commission considers these applications, its determinations are based on the land uses which are allowed under the zoning district put forth in the application and any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Now, land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters, and it's important to know that the Commission is not here to determine all details of a development. That process involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the Commission's work. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, the Commissioners will have been provided with a traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features, such as the means of management of stormwater, excuse me, are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than in this forum. Lastly, concerns that aren't related to land use aren't germane, are not germane to the Commission's consideration of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates and questions of who may particularly own or live or live at or use a subject property are not for the Commission's consideration. If there are questions about matters that are not addressed this evening, those may be referred to the Planning Department or City Technical Staff as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuances and withdrawals, Mr. Kirkman.
Yes, thank you, Chair Magid. We do not have any cases for continuance or withdrawal this evening. I will note for the audience, Case PLP 2529 and Z 2507007, that was on the published agenda for this meeting for 1143 and 1163 Pleasant Ridge Road, that item was not eligible to be heard this evening. There are some deficiencies with the application, and that will have to be postponed to a future meeting. So if anybody's here for that one, that item will not be heard tonight.
Is there anyone here for that case? Okay, thank you for the clarity. It's my understanding that we have three cases in opposition tonight. And they are Z 25-07-008, 3,000 West Market Street, Z 25-07-01-3600, Reedy Fork Parkway, and Z 25-07-011, 725 Knox Road. All of the remaining cases, which I'm going to read out, will be put on the expedited case agenda. Z 25-07-001, 2018 McKnight Mill Road, Z 25-07-002, 3703 Osborne Road, Z 25-0-003, 169 Marshall Smith Road, Z 25-07-004, 3521 Edgefield Road, Z 25-0-005, 5511 Burlington Road, and Z 25-0-009, 400 Carolyn Coleman Way, and Z 25-0-006, Burlington Road Right-of-Way. I'd like to take a moment to make sure that no one here in the chamber or online has any opposition to any of those cases I just read. All right, seeing none, we will place those on the expedited agenda and proceed with expedited. And we need something on our screens, please.
Yeah, we'll have that in just a second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Do your screens, what are your screens?
Now we're seeing the acknowledgement. Great, perfect, perfect, thank you.
Chair Magid, if you want to announce this first case, the information.
Item Z 25-0-001, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family III to R5 Residential Single Family V for the property identified as 2018 McKnight Mill Road, generally described as south of McKnight Mill Road and east of 16th Street, .68 acres. Good evening.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is a zoning map showing the subject property is approximately 0.68 acres and is located south of McKnight Mill Road and east of 16th Street. This is a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family III to R5 Residential Single Family V. North of the request is Zone CD RM12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12. East, south, and west of the request is Zone County RS30 Residential Single Family. This is an aerial map showing the subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. North of the request contains multifamily dwellings. East and west of the request contain single-family dwellings. South of the request contains undeveloped land. There is no condition associated with this request, and the staff recommended approval and indicated that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a more vibrant and livable Greensboro and creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed R5 Residential Single Family V zoning district would allow land uses that are compatible with the area's general character, the proposed densities appropriate as a subject property is located in proximity to major thoroughfares and in support of the high intensity uses nearby. And I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Does the Commissioners have any questions? All right, seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes to speak. Okay. So you have, you have denied, declined the opportunity. Okay, without further objection, we will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 2018 McKnight Mill Road from R3 Residential Single Family III to R5 Residential Single Family V to be consistent with the adopted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed R5 zoning permits, uh, uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor, Mr. Gilmore. I'd just like to recognize that Commissioner Glass is now with us, and we have our eight to vote. So we will now take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Seven to, eight, we're eight to zero. Okay, so this approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 City Council meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item is Item Z 25-07-002, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family III to RM5 Residential Multifamily V for the property identified as 3703 Osborne Road, generally described as east of Osborne Road and north of McLusston Road and south of Glen Shear Way, .67 acres. Welcome, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Magid. As you stated, this is a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family III to RM5 Residential Multifamily V. North and south of the request are Zone R3. East of the request is Zone LI Light Industrial, and west of the request is Zone R7 Residential Single Family. The subject property is currently undeveloped. North and south of the request contain single-family dwellings. East of the request contains undeveloped land, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings as well. In recommending approval of the request, staff noted that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan currently designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and as residential on the future land use map. Staff found that the proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. And the proposed RM5 zoning district would allow residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed density is appropriate as a subject property is located in proximity to major thoroughfares and supports the higher intensity uses nearby. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower density residential uses on adjacent properties. And we have an interesting question.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none, without further objection, we'll close the public hearing, unless the applicant would like to speak.
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay, so the applicant has declined. Now, without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
I'll leave.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Regarding Z 25-07-002, 3703 Osborne Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 3703 Osborne Road from R3 Residential Single Family III to RM5 Residential Multifamily V to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed RM5 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and an appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next case on our agenda is Item PLP 25-26 and Z 25-07-003, an annexation and original zoning request from County AEG Agricultural to City PUD Planned Unified Development and consideration of the required unified development plan for the properties identified as a portion of 164 and all of 135ZZ and 169 Marshall Smith Road, generally described as west of Marshall Smith Road and north of West Market Street, 59.42 acres. And, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it contains approximately 59.42 acres. The property is, as Chair Magid said, located west of Marshall Smith Road and north of West Market Street. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County Agricultural to City Planned Unit Development, and there is a unified development plan that will be considered along with this request. North, east, and south of the request are zoned County Agricultural. This is the aerial map of the subject property, showing that it currently contains agricultural land and undeveloped land. North and south of the subject property contain single-family dwellings and undeveloped land, and east of the request contains single-family dwellings, west of the request contains undeveloped land. Along with this request, there were several conditions that were either changed or added, so I need to read in three conditions for your acceptance. So the, I'll just read them out. Condition number two, the applicant shall construct a seven-foot opaque fence along A, along the eastern side of parcel 170465, where it abuts parcel 170476 and parcel 170 456. B, along the southern boundary line of parcel 170457 for approximately 360 linear feet as measured from the right-of-way of Marshall Smith Road. And C, along the northern boundary of parcel 218896, where it abuts parcels 170471 and 170472. Condition number three, except where existing and retained vegetation provides equal or better performance, where the site abuts parcels 170476, 170456, 170469, 170471, and 170472, the applicant shall plant a type-C buffer yard that shall be of evergreen material for year-round screening. And the applicant, number four, the applicant shall also plant a second staggered row of evergreen, of evergreens along parcels 170476, 170456, 170469, 170471, and 170472, using a mix of evergreen varieties expected to grow at least 15 feet at maturity. Each of these evergreens shall be at least five feet in height at the time of planting. We'll need your acceptance of those conditions.
Thank you. We need a motion to accept the conditions.
I move approval of the additional, uh, conditions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Thank you. And this is the Unified Development Plan that is proposed with this application. It went to the Technical Review Committee and was approved or recommended for approval at their July 15th meeting. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general and ex-urban on the future built form map. If annexed, the ex-urban portion of the property will be designated as urban general. The future land use map designates the property as being within the Western Area Plan, and the Western Area Plan designates the property as agricultural. It's important to note that the assumptions made in the Western Area Plan regarding future land use have not necessarily come to fruition, and there's been additional investment into utilities in this area recently and are planned. And so it is, it makes sense that certain land uses might come to this area that were not contemplated in the Western Area Plan when it was adopted. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. The proposed planned unit development zoning designation as conditioned would allow a mix of residential uses that are complementary to the surrounding area and expand housing choices in close proximity to a, to major job creators. The proposed development is compatible with the, with the scale and design of the adjacent road and nearby uses. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Does the Commission have any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes to speak.
[inaudible] Good evening. My name is Lee Prince. I'm a land use attorney with Fox Rothschild. I'm one of Tom Terrell's partners in the Charlotte office, and I'm filling in for him while he's on vacation enjoying some lobster in Maine. My office is located at 101 South Tryon Street, Suite 1700 in Charlotte, 28246. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of Polty Homes for the Marshall Smith Road project. I'm really just taking a couple minutes here because I want to talk about the significant community engagement that there has been regarding the buffer between existing and proposed residences. Relative to Conditions 3 and 4 that you've just accepted, Polty has agreed to condition the project on planting additional evergreen screening, including a mix similar to, and I'll apologize if I say any of these wrong, Yoshino Cryptomeria Green Giant Arboretum and Nellie R. Stevens Holly. And I also finally just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge the long history of the Marshall family that has farmed this area for seven generations. Polty has heard and respects that history and has decided to name the tract in honor of them and calling it the Marshall Preserve. So thank you so much for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Lovely, lovely. Would any other person like to speak in favor? Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. We have an annexation, a zoning, and a UDP.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the annexation. Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Skeens. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes eight to zero.
And I'll make a motion regarding a portion of, regarding Z 2507003, portion of 164 and all of 135 ZZ and 169 Marshall Smith Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at a portion of 164 and all of 135 ZZ and 169 Marshall Smith Road from County AG Agricultural to City PUD Planned Unit Development to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. The proposed City PUD zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Commissioner Nichols, I'll second the motion, but subject to just a small refinement, and that is that the minutes should probably reflect that it's, we are approving the original zoning request, subject to conditions that were previously approved by motion.
Thank you for that clarity. So, that has been, thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Nichols. And with that said, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes eight to zero. And now, we need the UDP, please.
And I also move approval of the UDP, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Downing. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes eight to zero. The UDP is a final action, so I'm going to address that first. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing on Tuesday, August 19, 2025, City Council meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. And now, in regard to the annexation and the zoning, this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing on Tuesday, August 19, 2025, City Council meeting. Thank you so much, Mr. Carter. The next property is item PLP 25-27 and Z 25-07-004, an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDR3, Conditional District Residential Single Family 3, for the property identified as 3521 Edgefield Road, generally described as west of Edgefield Road and south of Alcorn Road and east of Interstate 73, 12.23 acres. And, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair Maggott. This is the zoning map for the subject property, showing that it contains approximately 12.25 acres and is located west of Edgefield Road and south of Alcorn Road. This is an annexation and an original zoning request from County Agricultural to City CDR3. North of the request is zoned County Agricultural; east of the request is zoned County RS40; south and west of the request are zoned County Agricultural and Oak Ridge Agricultural. This is the aerial map of the subject property, showing that it is currently undeveloped. North of the request contain single-family dwellings; east of the request contain single-family dwellings and a religious assembly use; south of the request contain single-family dwellings and undeveloped land; and west of the request contains I-73 right-of-way and wireless telecommunications facility farther west. This is the condition that was submitted by the applicant. In recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general and exurban on the Future Built Form Map. If annexed, the exurban portion of the property will be designated as urban general. The GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map currently designates the subject property as residential. The proposed original zoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed CDR3 zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses in the utilities, also permits uses in the utilities use group, in addition to other single-family dwellings. Actually, I apologize. The, as conditioned, here I go. As conditioned, only the uses that are allowed in the utilities use group would be permitted. So, the addition of a public utility at this location would facilitate future development in the surrounding area. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes to speak. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. While Mr. Carter is getting my, I want to show one slide up. My name is Mike Fox, and I'm here representing Duke Energy. I'm with Tuggle Duggins. My address is 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800 here in Greensboro. I just want to say briefly, this is very similar to the matter that you saw a couple of months ago, where you have a growing part of the city of Greensboro that needs more infrastructure, and that's exactly what this substation is designed to do. I want to show this map here. This shows, this is in the western part of the city, near the airport. There's been a number of huge job announcements at the airport recently, so there's a lot of economic activity out there, needing a lot of energy. And just to kind of put the exclamation point on this particular thing, the matter before this matter, the one you just approved, would benefit from this as well. So, this is a fast-growing area, and Duke Energy is committed to serving the needs of the citizens of Greensboro, and we would respectfully request your approval of this. And I have a team here of engineers. If you have any questions, Hank Henning, who's the community liaison for Duke Energy, is here as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hank, would you like to say something as well? Do you need to? Are there any questions from the commission?
Nothing to add, really. It's just a growing area. This substation will greatly help us to serve our future customers, existing ones, and it's definitely going to improve reliability and resiliency as well.
Thank you very much. The only thing that I noticed, which was unusual, was the, in the annexation, the applicant stated that water was not needed for their use. Or the, okay, so that's just, that's the first time we've done an annexation where water is not needed. So, thank you for that. You're saving Greensboro water. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, with that said, without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
First, the annexation.
Oh, yes. First the annexation, then the original zoning.
So, I'll move to annex PLP 25-27.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Gilmore. Okay, now we'll take the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes eight to zero. Now, we need the original zoning.
As to item Z 25-7-004, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 3521 Edgefield Road from County AG Agricultural to City CDR3, Conditional District Residential Single Family 3, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. Two, the proposed CDR3 zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Gilmore. Okay, now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August 19, 2025, City Council meeting. The next item on our agenda is item PLP 25-28 and Z 25-07-005, an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, for the property identified as 5511 Burlington Road, generally described as north of Burlington Road and east of Mount Hope Church Road, 2.572 acres, and Z 25-07-006, this is the right-of-way part, an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City LI Light Industrial for the property identified as a portion of Burlington Road right-of-way, generally described as east of Spruce Tree Drive and west of Birch Creek Road, 2.78 acres. And, Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, Chair Maggott. This is a zoning map, and it shows that the subject properties, which is the property at 5511 Burlington Road and a section of the right-of-way, is a total of 2.85 acres. 2.572 acres are part of this 5511 Burlington Road, and 0.28 acres is the road right-of-way. The subject properties are described as north of Burlington Road and includes a portion of Burlington Road and east of Mount Hope Church Road. Z 2507005, it is an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium. The request Z 2507006 is an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City LI Light Industrial. North and west of the request are zoned County AG Agricultural; east of the request is zoned County AG Agricultural and County CZLI, Conditional Light Industrial. South of the request are zoned City LI Light Industrial. This is the aerial map, and it shows that the subject property contains a single-family dwelling and a portion of Burlington Road right-of-way. North and west of the request contains undeveloped land; east of the request contains single-family dwellings and outdoor storage. South of the request contains a warehouse and distribution use. There are two conditions associated with this request. And staff recommended approval of the request and stated that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map designates the subject property as urban general and as along a possible workforce transit corridor. The Future Land Use Map designates this property as residential. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plan's, filling in our framework, big idea, to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed. The proposed CDCM zoning district, as conditioned, would allow land uses that are compatible with the general correct of the area as a neighborhood and district-scale activity center or in corridors on the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Built Form Map. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visible buffer to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. The proposed City LI Light Industrial zoning district will allow land uses that are compatible with the general correct of the area. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes. Okay, the applicant has declined. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. And I have a question to ask Mr. Kirkman. The annexation is the same for both, and so we just do one annexation?
Right. One annexation motion and two zoning.
And then two separate motions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for the different, all right. So, we'll start with an annexation.
I move.
I will entertain a motion.
I move annexation for both.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. All right. We will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes eight to zero. And now, we need a motion for the 07005 first. Would someone read the motion?
For Z 2507005, 5511 Burlington Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 5511 Burlington Road from County AG Agricultural to City CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. Two, the proposed City CDCM zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. I need a second.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Now, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes eight to zero. And now, we need a motion for the 7-005, uh, 6, sorry, the right-of-way.
I can do that one, too?
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
And this is 006, right?
Yes. And we just... The numbers are backwards on this one.
The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at a portion of Burlington Road right-of-way from County AG Agricultural to City LI Light Industrial to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. Two, the proposed City LI zoning Two, the proposed City LI zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties; Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second, Warshay Downing.
Thank you, Ms. Turner and Mr. Downing. Now we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes eight to zero. Let's see, this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, City Council meeting. Is the annexation also recommend...
Yes, recommendation for both annexation and original zoning.
And so the annexation is included in that favorable recommendation as well as 7006 and 7005. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Z 25-07-009, a rezoning request from CM Commercial Medium to CDRM8, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8, for the property identified as 400 Carolyn Coleman Way of Blessed Memory. Every time I say her name, I have to say Blessed Memory. Generally described as south of Carolyn Coleman Way and east of Bellevue Street and west of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, .20 acres.
Thank you, Chair Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
This is the zoning map of the area. This is a rezoning request from CM Commercial Medium to CDRM8, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8. North of the request is Zone TN, Traditional Neighborhood. East and south of the request are Zone CM, Commercial Medium, and west of the request is Zone R5, Residential Single Family 5. The aerial map shows that the subject property is currently, contains undeveloped land. North of the request contains a religious assembly use. East of the request contains a commercial structure under development. South of the request contains parking and landscaping, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings. This is the condition which was proposed by the applicant and advertised for the request. And in recommending approval of the request, staff noted that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the site as urban central on the future built form map and commercial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports both the comprehensive plan's filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro, and the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. And in recommending approval, staff note that the proposed CDRM8 zoning district, as conditioned, limits available uses to residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed maximum overall gross density is appropriate as the subject property is located in proximity to major thoroughfares. Do you have to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes to speak.
And Chair Maggie, the applicant is available if you have any questions.
I'm sorry.
The applicant is available if you have any questions.
Basically, just saying applicant is available if you have any questions.
Oh, oh, thank you. Okay, I can understand what you're saying.
But doesn't need to speak necessarily.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any questions, do we? No, seeing none, but thank you applicant. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion regarding agenda item Z 2507-009. Yes, 400 Carolyn Coleman Way. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 400 Carolyn Coleman Way from CM Commercial Medium to CDRM8, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons: Number one, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDRM8 zoning district, as conditioned, permits zoning that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impact on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Stu Nichols, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Now we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes eight to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Now we're moving to our regular agenda, and we'll start with the first item is Z 25-07-008, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CDRM8, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8, for the property identified as 3,000 West Market Street, generally described as north of West Market Street and west of Green Valley Road, 1.32 acres. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Maggie. The zoning map of the area shows that the subject property is approximately 1.32 acres, as you stated, and is located north of West Market Street and west of Green Valley Road. This is a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CDRM8, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8. North, east, south, and west of the request are Zone R3 Residential Single Family 3. The aerial map of the property shows that the subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. North and west of the request contain single-family dwellings. East of the request contains street right-of-way and drainage way and open space, and south of the request contains single-family dwellings and the Greensboro Arboretum. This image shows the subject property as seen from West Market Street. This image shows the subject property as seen from Green Valley Road. This image shows a single-family dwelling located northwest of the request on Homewood Avenue, Zone R3. This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request on Green Valley Road, Zone R3. This image shows drainage way and open space located east of the request on Green Valley Road, Zone R3. This image shows a single-family dwelling located south of the request on West Market Street, Zone R3. This image shows a small portion of undeveloped land, road median, located south of the request on West Market Street, Zone R3. This image shows a single-family dwelling located west of the request on West Market Street, Zone R3. And this image shows another single-family dwelling located west of the request on West Market Street, Zone R3. This view here is facing west on West Market Street, the subject property is on the right. And this view is facing east on West Market Street, the subject property here is on the left. This view is facing north on Green Valley Road, the subject property is on the left. And this view is facing south on Green Valley Road, the subject property is on the right. There were conditions advertised associated with the request proposed by the applicant, and the applicant is also proposing additions to the conditions, which I'm going to read into the record now. The applicant is wishing to add condition three, maximum building height shall not exceed 45 feet, and condition four, a type C planting yard having an average width of 15 feet and a minimum width of 10 feet shall be required along the northern and western boundary lines of the property.
And we will take a vote now. I need a motion to bring these conditions in.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the additional two conditions.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Downing. Now we'll, I'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes eight to zero.
And in recommending approval of the request, staff noted that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports both the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. Staff noted that the proposed CDRM8 zoning district, as conditioned, would allow residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed density is appropriate as the subject property is located in close proximity to major thoroughfares and is walkable to community amenities such as the Greensboro Arboretum, Starmount Park, and the Lake Daniel Greenway. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. Do you have to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay, if the applicant would come forward, you have up to 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Thank you, Chair Maggie. My name is Bo Rodenbo, and I'm attorney with Brooks Pierce Law Firm here in Greensboro. My office address is Suite 2,300 North Elm Street, Greensboro, NC 27401. I appear here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Peaceful Ridge LLC, and the principal of that entity, Mr. Joe Brady, is also here tonight and would like to spend a few minutes speaking with you as well. I want to begin by talking with the Commission about the efforts that we made to reach out to the neighbors in the, in the community. On June the 23rd, we sent out a letter to all of the neighbors listed within 750 feet of the property as provided to us by the planning staff, and gave them notice of a meeting of the neighborhood to be held at Peace United Church of Christ, which is just a little to the east of this property on West Market Street. And at that meeting, we had about 20 people, 20 neighbors attend that meeting. We provided both in the, in the letter giving notice of that meeting and at the meeting, an email address to which any of the neighbors could provide us with further comments, and we received, I think about three or four emails from neighbors in response to that email address. We also received comments on Nextdoor, as well as Mr. Carter provided me this weekend with an email that had been presented to the planning staff by a neighbor who was outside the 750 feet. And we have surveyed all of those for you in our amended application, which was submitted to the city on Thursday, and we attached as addenda to that submission copies of all the comments on Nextdoor, as well as the comments taken at the meeting and the emailed We moved for the, for this rezoning because we believe that it will be an important addition to the housing stock of Greensboro on this 1.32 acre site we're proposing, as reflected on the preliminary sketch plan that is, site plan that is put up on the screen right now, that there be no more than 10 townhome units. These would be luxury townhome units of three stories in height with garages, two-car garages on the first floor, and providing for elevators to the upper floors of the, of the units. As you can see, the, the sketch plan calls for the community to be oriented centrally to the center of the project rather than out toward the adjoining streets or the neighbors to the west and the north of the property. We believe it's an attractive addition to the community and that it will, rather than detracting from the values of the existing single-family residences in Starmount Forest, will in fact enhance the, the values of those residents because the developer expects to market these units in, in the price point in the, in the range of the low seven figures. We have, in response to the comments that we received, as well as comments we received from certain of the commissioners that we reached out to, we have added those two conditions. One, that the, the, there'd be a planting yard of no less than a minimum of 10 feet and no more than, and an average of 15 feet, so no more than 20 feet in, in distance, and that's reflected on the sketch plan here around the entire perimeter of the property, but particularly along the west property line with the single-family home to the west there, and then along the north property line with respect to the single-family residential homes on that property line as well. We also, in response to comments we received about concerns about the height of these units and overlooking the adjoining properties, we have added the condition for no more than, building height would be no more than 45 feet, which would allow us 10 to 12 feet for each floor of the units, plus room for a peaked roof on the units in accordance with the brownstone style that the developer intends to present for this property. There were concerns expressed at the, at the meeting and in comments we received about the traffic, the addition to traffic here. As you will note, from looking at the preliminary sketch plan, this property fronts on Green Valley Road, which is one-way at that point, having just received the off-ramp from Windover Avenue and coming up the intersection with West Market Street. And that means that there will be right-in and right-out access only to this property from Green Valley Road. There'll be no access onto West Market Street, and the concern was that people coming to get into this development, townhome development on West Market Street, or coming out of the development onto West Market Street and getting, trying to get back toward Friendly Avenue would turn right onto Homewood Avenue, and the concern about additional traffic there. As to that, we would note that this is going to be a very limited addition to the major thoroughfare, which is West Market Street, and the Connector Street, which is Green Valley Road, with, and, with no more than 20 trips at peak hours in the morning and 20 trips at peak hours in the afternoon, and therefore, in accordance with the LDO, a traffic study was not required here. But the, the developer has indicated that they'd be, be willing to cooperate with the city and the neighbors to the extent that they wanted to do this, to pay for traffic calming devices on Homewood Avenue to reduce the, the problems there. We can't, of course, impose that as a condition because we don't have any control over that, but, but we, we have made that offer. We, we also have offered to the community, there was concern about how this would look as, the Starmount Forest sign, as you know, if you travel on West Market Street, there's an historic Starmount Forest sign just past the overpass for, the underpass for Windover Avenue there. We were told by the neighbors at our neighborhood meeting that, that some neighbor had, had provided a few years ago for having that sign repainted. It is again looking pretty dingy and washed out, and so the developer has advised the neighbors and would be happy to work with the city. That sign's located in the, in the city's right-of-way for Buffalo Creek, to have that sign refurbished in accordance with the neighbors' desires, including having a powder-coated sign put up which would look more attractive and be, and be more resilient. And with that, I will yield the floor to Mr. Brady, and then I can come back and be available for questions.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hey, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Joe Brady, 205 Kensington Road, Sunset, Sunset Hills. I grew up in Starmount Forest, and my parents lived at 3109 Madison Avenue, like two blocks from here, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to making this corner of the neighborhood stand out to all of our residents and to make it something that is not now. Right now, there's a lot of homeless people that spend time there, and there's a lot of interactions that go on at that corner, and I hope to take this from being a, a corner that is not well-used right now to being a corner that is well-used. And, and so my plan is to build 10 brownstone units and have them be very attractive and be a, a signature element for Starmount Forest.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just had a, one question. Parking... Parking on the actual development?
Yes, ma'am.
For someone coming to visit? Have you allotted for that? Parking on the, I see, you know, where the driveways are for the garages.
Well, so the plan is that the, each home will have two parking spaces outside of their unit and then have two parking spaces inside the unit, too. So there'll be four spaces for every home.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I wasn't clear on that. Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay, all right. Next, those who are wishing to speak in opposition, you have a sheer total time of 10 minutes. Will you please come up to the podium?
And my name is Federico Borso. I am the, no, I don't have it. I'm the owner of 107 Green Valley Road, which is the property right adjacent to the lot, and tonight I'd like to speak on behalf of myself and my wife, Heather Wright Borso, who couldn't come. And thank you again for the opportunity that you're giving me to speak tonight. I'd like to say that I oppose the request by the applicant, and I'd like to give some contest in support of my opposition. Greensboro has been my home, as well as my family's home, since 2014. Prior to move to Starmount Forest, me and my family lived in Lindley Park, but since In 2017, my father-in-law in Texas lost his wife, and so he, since then, moved with us, and he then developed dementia, so the house in Lindley Park became too small for us. We started to look outside of Lindley Park for a bigger house. And we found this lovely house in Old Starmount Forest. We, the features that made us fall in love and attracted us to the house were primarily, but not only, the beauty of the neighborhood, the safety, the privacy. When we bought, when we bought the house, just single homes were neighboring my property. So, yeah, these were the main elements. So, safety and privacy are my main concerns today because I believe that if the request was to be approved, and if 10 units were to be built on the lot next door, I think those beautiful features that made us buy the house would be compromised. I am a dog owner, and I walk my dogs every day from the house to the Arboretum, which is something that I love, and I think that the increased traffic would be, would be bad for, not just for walking the dogs or people like me who walk the dogs, but I'm thinking about the many children who live in the block. I'm thinking about the noise, traffic overall. The idea of going from having one single house as a neighbor to 10 is very overwhelming for us, for me and my family. Speaking about safety, I'm very concerned about the traffic that this development would create. I'm also very concerned about the water situation and drainage. When we, since when we moved to this house on 107 Green Valley Road, we learned and discovered that there is a lot of water, even underneath our house. When substantial amount of rain poured down in our area, you see small rivers of water creating, particularly, the most affected area is exactly on the border of my property and the 3,000 West Market lot. So on that border, there's a big flow of water. So I've had several expenses to prevent flooding in my basement, and I am very concerned about the potential hazard or, yeah, flooding issues when the, when it may, there may be a situation where there is a cement development instead of nature as there is now. Also, I wanted to cite a fact that I became aware today, that in a similar high-density development at the corner of West Avondale and Friendly Avenue tragically led to severe flooding, forcing the city to purchase and demolish a single-family home at 401 West Avondale due to persistent issues from Buffalo Creek. So this is very concerning.
I just want to let you know, there's 3 minutes and 36 seconds, and can I interrupt you just for one minute?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkman or Mr. Ducharme, could you talk about stormwater just for a minute here, that it's not part of our purview, please?
Yeah, ultimately, that's going to be an issue addressed by the technical staff. I will say, our water resources staff, when plans come in, will evaluate the project, and the standard they kind of use is that the water that is generated from the project will be no greater than what was generated previously through different means and other things on there. So the idea is that any new development will not create any additional offsite impacts if it's to be approved.
So just to let you understand that stormwater is not an issue, that comes next in the technical review part of this, so I just wanted to let you know so you didn't continue to talk about it. It's an issue, we understand.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yes, I just want to say that that's an issue that represents a potential threat for me or an economical threat. Also, I forgot to mention that I was, me and my family were away on vacation when that letter from the developer was sent. We only received the letter when we got back from vacation, so we couldn't attend the meeting that was mentioned earlier. Finally, yeah, my last and main concern is the potential economical impact of this, as it's been, I think that if my neighbor become a 10-unit place instead of a single unit, I think that may lower the value of my property.
I just want, I just want to remind you, there's 10 minutes that you're sharing with everyone, and now there's 2 minutes and 45 seconds. Could we stop the clock for a second? Thank you. And there are two other speakers that are standing behind you. And you'll be able to speak again at the rebuttal if you would like to.
Okay.
So...
Okay. I stop here. Thank you very much.
You have more time in the next five-minute part to speak.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Speckard. I live at 3,004 West Market Street, directly next to the property that we're discussing today. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, John Speckard. The front of our home was not pictured on the slideshow, but we are directly next to the property.
Give us your, give us your name and address, please.
Oh, Allison Speckard, 3,004 West Market Street.
Thank you so much.
We live at this home with our young children, similar to Federico, and his wife. Safety and privacy are our biggest concerns tonight. It is hard for us to be for this change when we have not had sufficient information, we feel, on how this will affect the privacy and security of our home. The traffic flow at Green Valley and West Market is a huge issue. We have a disproportionate amount of accidents that happen. We are calling 911 regularly at that intersection. Again, we have young children. We are at the corner of Homewood and Market, very concerned about the traffic impact and the fact that no traffic impact study is required with adding 10 homes next to us. A lot of young children in our neighborhood, a lot of pedestrians with the park across the street. You know, our requests are a professional traffic study, construction of a privacy wall against all of the properties, restrictions on balconies facing our property. Again, our property is the largest border to the side, and the construction impacts that this would have on our home. We are, again, not opposed to thoughtful development, and we're committed to being reasonable. We just don't feel like we've seen enough in the plan and in the proposal to feel comfortable with this change, going from a single-family home to 10, to 10 homes. We did share this information with the Peaceful Ridge team and the zoning administrators this morning. That's pretty much all that we have. We're just hoping for a little bit more time and more information, and that this would be a thoughtful, a thoughtful decision, and thinking about the impacts that this would have specifically with the traffic onto Market and onto Homewood Avenue. We have drag racing, we have a lot of car accidents that happen on this road. It's a huge safety concern, as is, so thoughtful planning is just a huge request. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's six seconds left, and we'll call you next in the rebuttal.
I'll be very brief if I can, if not, I'll try to keep it under a minute.
No, you have six seconds. That's all you have. It's not really long enough for you to, say your name and address, and then...
My name is Michael Ventry. I'm at 102 Homewood, right around the corner, and I would just like to say that I'm pleased to know that the developers from the neighborhood...
And we'll call you first in the rebuttal. Thank you so much. Now for the, I didn't ask if we have any people online. Do we have any people online who wanted to participate?
So far, not yet, Chair Megan.
Thank you so much. Okay. Now the rebuttal, the applicant, you have five minutes. Please give your name and address.
Again, my name is Beau Rodenbeau, and my address is Suite 2,230 North Elm Street, Greensboro, NC 27401. And I would just like to respond to, very quickly, to two points that were raised by the opponents. Number one, as to storm drainage from this site, as Mr. Kirkman said, we will be going through the Technical Review Committee process. In fact, the developer here has already been working since January with the Technical Review Committee on this site plan, and the current stormwater devices that we're planning for this property are a centrally-located underground storage tank for receive stormwater from the site and then drain it off into the city's stormwater system after it's collected in those underground tanks, and so we believe that that's actually going to improve the drainage on the neighbor's property to the north of this site. As to the traffic, we believe that the neighbor's concerns are principally about traffic that's already there. The Green Valley Road is a collector's street that takes the ramp off of Wendover Avenue. That's, and you then, of course, have 30,000 trips a day on West Market Street already, and so that's why you have so many accidents at the intersection of Green Valley Road and West Market Street. As I said earlier, we believe that this is going to be a minimal addition to the traffic on both Green Valley Road and West Market Street, and to the extent that people are concerned about people turning off of West Market Street onto Homewood Avenue to get into this development, we would be happy to work with the city and the neighbors on traffic calming devices on Homewood Avenue. Thank you.
Will you stay there, please?
Yes.
Don't sit down yet. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
I have one question. Is it true that the ingress and egress is limited to Green Valley? There will be none on West Market?
That is correct, Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And setback, I just, Mr. Kirkman, could you just square us, remind us again about an RM8, what the setback is required as opposed to an R3?
You'll have to give me a second here to pull the ordinance up.
Okay. Perfect. And while you're pulling that up, there was one other question that I had. Oh, outreach, outreach. Did we ask that question? I don't know, did I miss it?
I opened, Chair Megan, with our extensive comments about our outreach.
Okay. And any other concerns with the commission while we're waiting?
Chair Megan, so in terms of comparisons, the existing R3 residential, single-family district, your required side setback is 10 feet from adjacent property lines and a rear setback of 30 feet. Under the RM8 zoning district, that is reduced to a five-foot side setback and a 15-foot rear.
In the front?
Are you referring to the landscape buffer? Is that what you're trying to get to versus building? Okay.
The setbacks you mentioned were for building setbacks.
Yeah, and I will say that the townhome units have specific setbacks based on the number of units attached in the building, so the larger number of units, the greater setback from property lines. So it depends on the configuration as to what the actual setback will be for the townhomes, so I apologize for that. I was quoting to you from the single-family side.
But on a Type C, is that what is required by the ordinance or in addition to what is required by the ordinance for what he's requesting?
So for a townhome unit, the Type C buffer is what would be required by the ordinance. If it was a single-family development and both uses are allowed into the zoning, there is no interior buffer requirements, so that would be more restrictive in that scenario.
So the condition for that he added is an average, the planting yard would be an average width of 15 feet?
Right. That is a Type C buffer, correct, and that is what would be required by the ordinance for townhome development.
Okay. And what, well, it would be different if it was a single-family because it adjoins single families.
Correct, right. There wouldn't be any buffer requirements if it was a single-family, and both types of uses are allowed by the zoning.
So by virtue of this being a townhome as opposed to single-family, the buffers will be greater than if it was a single-family house?
Correct.
So there'll be more privacy with townhomes than there would be with single-family because of the landscaping that's going to be done.
Right. Single-family development has no landscaping requirements nor any kind of tree conservation requirements, whereas both come into this equation if it's a townhome development.
Great. And I'm reading an RM8, and it says, "Front street setback is 20 to 25 feet," and I know there was one person in opposition who was concerned about that.
Yes. And if you look at the preliminary site plan that we provided, that we are showing a 35-foot setback from both West Market Street and Green Valley Road. showing a 35-foot setback from both West Market Street and Green Valley Road, in addition to the landscape buffer.
Thank you for that clarity. I just wanted to understand that a little bit better. Thank you so much. Mr. Downing?
So, just to clarify, there's just one way in, one way out, right?
That's correct. On Green Valley Road, there'll be a pork shop there to prevent any, anybody from turning left on the Green Valley Road, because that's a one, at that point, Green Valley Road is a one-way street.
Right. And, thank you. And so, I'll, you added two more conditions, or there are four conditions. I only see two. It's probably my emails. Could you share the three and four, conditions, conditions three and four? They were on the screen.
Well, conditions, the conditions three and four that were added are in the report that the staff furnished to you today.
Yeah, basically, that's the height restriction is condition three, and the landscaping requirement is condition four.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're just getting a lot of clarity, so just bear with us. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Ms. Ginn.
And, and to confirm, that the height restriction for single-family is 50 feet in R3.
Correct.
Correct.
And so, they are, have reduced their height to 45 feet.
Correct.
So, it won't be as high as a single-family house could be.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I have one additional question for staff. Will this include sidewalks? Will the develop, be required to have sidewalks?
Sidewalks are a general requirement in development, yes.
Okay.
So, if they're, if they're not existing on the site, so.
So, so there's an addition of a sidewalk on Green Valley, because there aren't any sidewalks on the Green Valley side.
There is, there is a sidewalk on Green Valley.
There is?
And we learned, we learned at the meeting with the neighbors, that apparently the city is planning on widening that sidewalk on Green Valley.
Okay, okay.
Chair Megan, if I may, real quick. Couple of questions back, I heard, getting into a little bit of site-specific detail, I do just want to gently remind the commission that the, the site plan at this stage, of course, is preliminary, it's purely illustrative. So, just want to gently remind the commissioner of that.
Yes, and, and, and we've received letters from people in opposition, so. Okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you. Thank you for, now, we'll hear rebuttal for those in opposition, and, but there's three minutes, three minutes remaining to speak in favor, if anyone else would like to speak in favor in the rebuttal. Okay, seeing none, then we'll continue with the rebuttal. In opposition, you have shared five minutes, and the, the man that we cut off, please come back. We apologize. You-
And again, my name is Michael Ventry, 102 Homewood. Is, is it on? Okay. Michael Ventry, 102 Homewood. And I was just starting to say that I was pleased to know that the developer is from Starmount, and so, he understands what Starmount represents in the commu, he understands what Starmount Forest represents in the community in terms of the, the beautiful tree-lined streets. It's one of the, the jewels of Greensboro, and as I don't understand most of the protocols of what we can and cannot talk about in terms of the technical aspects, I just wanted to underline for the, the council that I think they should think long and hard about the responsibilities of creating a, what is unprecedented, it seems, a, a 10-unit townhouse right at the entrance of Starmount. And, you know, we're all, we're all friends and neighbors, and I'm fairly recent, it's been four years that I've been in the neighborhood. And what has always impressed me is about how well they've been able to maintain a cohesive neighborhood feel, and I think even the developer himself would recognize the responsibility of creating a complex like this, because in the end, 10 units shoehorned into a, what was originally a single-family home, will be a major disruption. I know that a lot of it is going to be about technical elements, but this also, I think, has a great deal of significance for Greensboro as well in terms of how they would like to manage their development. I wrote an email, I put in as much information as I could, as just one of many citizens, but I, I honestly believe that it's, that a responsible city councillor should think long and hard about it, what it means to adhere to this vision of Greensboro 2040, and the idea of great places to live, because I think most people in Starmount Forest believe it's an excellent example of a neighborhood that has organically been able to become a great place to live. And regardless of how this will be, whether this will be approved or not, and I think none of us like the idea of opposing somebody's good intentions of developing a, a new opportunity for new neighbors, regardless, I'd like to just appeal that we, that we all try to do this responsibly, and that we have access to the designs, the plans, that we receive feedback about all of the technical elements, so that we can participate if it were to be, if it were to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a minute and 49 seconds on the opposition rebuttal. Anyone else like to speak? No? Okay. So, we, we will, without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments or thoughts to be shared at this point from the commissioners before we take a vote?
I want to clear up one thing. The house that the city bought is directly behind me, and it was purchased four years before those properties on the corner were even proposed. I'm very familiar with that. Those townhomes, and there's 26, I believe, on that corner. So, as far as density in Starmount, I mean, that's the corner of Avondale and Friendly as opposed to Green Valley and, and Market Street. This is 10 units. It's 1.3 acres, which is a huge lot. They could build three houses on that lot and not have to go for rezoning. We, we keep talking about density, and, and we've, we've approved and are under construction at the corner of Avondale and Friendly. We have approved, and within probably a year or two, we'll have additional density at the corner of Friendly and Hobbs that will include some multifamily. So, we're moving towards density in what is a very, very popular, convenient, walkable, good schools, all the good things that people want to see. I do not see a problem with 10 units. It is very small compared to what's going to be built at Friendly and what's already under construction at Avondale and, and Friendly. So, it's, it's change. No one likes change, but I, I'm going to be supporting the project. It's, it's in my neighborhood. I live on Beverly. And, and I do not see a problem with it. And I, you're talking about 10 units and, you know, 20, what, 20 trips a day, I believe, was, was what the traffic study said. 20 additional cars is not going to make or break that corner. So, I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Nichols. Oh, do you want to make the motion?
No, no. I, I'd like to make some comments first. I understand the, the comments of the opposition, but I found much of it to be unpersuasive and inconsistent with the direction that I think the city needs to go to going forward. And one example of that is Mr. Ventry alluded to the fact that, or his assertion that this is unprecedented. First of all, it's not unprecedented. And secondly, if we are going to aspire to building enough housing to have those new employees, new residents coming in to work on this economic development that is booming, no pun intended, right now, we've got to do stuff like this. We've got to build with higher density. And otherwise, so, so we've got to do what's unprecedented. Otherwise, we're stuck with the existing precedents. And I, I think it's really important that everybody recognize that. You also talked about a great place to, to live. Well, we got to people, we got to build a place where people can live, and right now, we just don't have enough housing stock. The comments about the traffic I found particularly either speculative or unpersuasive. If you have 30,000 trips going down that road every day, to the point Commissioner Skeens made, what in the world does an additional 20 trips a day matter? In fact, a traffic expert, and I am not one, might conclude that having people pulling out, in and out of that driveway would actually help the traffic. You know, you're not going to drag race if somebody's pulling out of a driveway. So, I think all of that is, is speculative. I, I know change to your, your point is, is not easy, but I will be supporting this.
Ms. Turner.
Oh. Excuse me. I want to just add to the discussion is that I've been very favorably impressed with the presentation from the, the developer and his counsel. I think that it shows the kind of working together as an example that is set for other projects, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yeah, I, I also, like Ms. Turner, appreciate the community involvement, the public meeting, the input. And I understand the reluctance of the adjacent neighbors. I would probably feel the same if I lived next door. But I think in the greater scheme of things and in the greater picture, we do have a responsibility for the influx of development that we're having, and we need to find places. And I believe that this will be a project that is done in the character that suits the neighborhood. And I think with the limited ingress and egress on Green Valley, that, that that also will be a benefit to this. So, I very much will be in support of this.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I think with all, all, that all has been said, starting off with Commissioner Skeen, I think everybody has spoke well of it. I will be supporting the development also. We do need housing, and I don't see 10 houses making or breaking.
And, and I'd just like to say, I grew up in Starmount, and I'm familiar with this, and I know when we did Friendly Avenue, there was an upset about that as well, but we just have done that, and we need this housing, and I agree. And thank you so much, commissioners, for speaking so well. And now, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion regarding Z 2507 008, 3,000 West Market Street. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 3,000 West Market Street from R3 Residential Single-Family 3 to CD RM8 Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CD RM8 zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, seconds.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Gilmore. And now, we will take the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. This approval constitutes a final action. Unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department, and the appeal fee paid within 10 days, anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at Tuesday, August 19, 2025, City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our regular agenda is- Yeah, I think that we have two more. Maybe we should take a break now for, what do we want, like 15? Yeah, let's take a break now for, like, 15 minutes? A fif, we're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll see you on the other side.
The future of aviation is right here at Piedmont Triad International Airport. And when you see what is going to be built here, you will think you've stepped into a time machine.
This partnership is about more than building airplanes. It's about building futures. North Carolina has one of the most impressive talent ecosystems in the country. From your K-12 public schools to your top-ranked universities, best-in-class community colleges, we are thrilled to work with you to build the pipeline of engineers, technicians, and advanced manufacturing experts that are going to help us reshape aviation globally.
What did it take to make this announcement happen today?
It took hundreds of people. People in Guilford County, our surrounding counties, at the state, our state legislators, all of the economic development, if you add it up, maybe close to 1,000 people who have touched this project. And this project turned around really fast. I'm actually surprised how quickly it went from the beginning to the announcement.
And specifically, what did it take within the city to help make this happen?
Water and sewer. You know, when you look around at this whole airport campus, this is all Greensboro water and sewer. And so, our water and sewer department did yeoman's work, making sure that we had the capacity and the ability to feed a project as big as this.
I mean, now with HondaJet and FedEx here, and Boom, and now-
Marshall.
So, what does he think about aviation in Greensboro, and how did we become this place?
Well, you know, years ago, we talked about having this airport, being Eritropolis. And people laugh, like, what's an Eritropolis? Well, here it is. You know, it is to have these amazing employers, and then all of the supply chain that will come around it. For just about every job that's created out here, you can count on maybe five spinoff jobs elsewhere throughout the region.
And talking about jobs, this is going to bring a lot of jobs.
A lot of jobs at an average wage of almost $90,000. Those are life-changing wages. And, you know, there will be customized training for, for people. So, you know, if there are people watching us, and they think, well, I'll never get the jobs, that's not true. Go to the Guilford Works, find out more about it. Go to the community colleges. There is customized training. We want our residents to fill these jobs.
What does this mean personally to you?
Well, you know, I only have about 169 days left.
Not that you're counting.
I'm not counting, but it's really great to- But it's really great to go out on a high note with all of these wonderful announcements that we've had over the last five, six years.
So many good things. I loved when the governor said North Carolina was first in flight and the future of flight.
I think there might be another license plate in there, "future of flight." You know, it is great because right now I feel we are at the epicenter of economic development, right here in Guilford County, Greensboro. Not only is North Carolina looking at us, but today the world is looking at us.
I got to say it again, more than fourteen thousand jobs paying an average salary of more than eighty-nine thousand dollars. And so, of course, so many people are going to be asking, when is this happening? How can I get involved? The best way to be involved is to really stay in touch by following the city of Greensboro, the Guilford County, also Guilford Works, the Chamber of Commerce. You can also learn more about Jet Zero, their website is jetzero.aero. With flavors like cumin, sweet potato, hibiscus, these are not your typical frozen dessert flavors you'll find in every supermarket, but you will find them here. The idea was born thousands of miles away, but the product is made right here in Greensboro. All right, Shafna, where did the idea for Elica Treats come from?
It's from this desire to tell my story and build a community and create a community around me. Culinary really is not really my strength. I think that's more because of my background, having a mom who's an amazing cook. So I grew up having everything that's really flavorful. And also, my dad was a foodie even before foodie was a thing. predominantly, my flavors are Middle Eastern and Indian-inspired flavors. I do have a very diverse multicultural taste palette myself, that I have some incorporation of few flavors that's representation of communities that I connect with or I belong to. As in, like, right now, I'm North Carolinian, so I have Carolina Peach Sonker, which is a peach-based, non-dairy flavor. It has pancake bits in it, and it's me recreating Sonker from Surry County. The flavors are all cardamom-infused, that's what Elica means. Elica is cardamom in my mother tongue, which is Malayalam, the language spoken in Kerala. That's my, my parents' home state in India. This is where I store all our ingredients, because we actually try to source fresh produce from local sources itself, local suppliers. So, hence our farmers. So I purchase them when they're in season and, you know, stock them as much as possible. We have to be really creative with how much we package into a complete finished packaging and how much we actually store for later. Because there's also, as a wholesale business, you have to be prepared for, you know, recurring orders. And the only way to do that is to have something in stock rather than producing when you get the order, which is really highly expensive when you are a consumer packaged goods business. I mean, we don't have a designated kitchen space where we have access to it anytime and every time as we please. I mean, this is very easy access, but still, you know, we're renting it by the hour. So, they would, you have to factor those things in. These are our three-ounce cups. So Sulaimani Sorbet, which is black tea with cardamom and lemon. It's literally a drink. It's a piping hot tea that we serve typically after a huge meal. And it's very prominent in the Muslim community itself, regardless which part of the Muslim community around the world. It's a Muslim culture to have black tea after a huge big feast to serve that to your guests. And so, you know, I just, I executed that tea as a sorbet. So this freezer started my journey here, really. And this is where we store now all of our three-ounce cups and some of our gift packaging. I did launch Greensboro, that's an accelerator program by the Chamber here in Greensboro. And at the end of the program, they granted me this freezer upon my request, you know, to assist me with my distribution. I do love, actually, the fact that this business really challenges me in so many different ways, that it's always continuous problem-solving, which I've always been good at, and that's something that actually keeps me interested. So Kulfi is our best seller, that's considered traditional Indian ice cream. That's actually milk-based with saffron, cardamom, and pistachio. And Kulfi is literally the emperor of frozen desserts. Hands down. Like, so that's the only flavor that I did not create. But all the other flavors that we have are all my own creations. It's worth experiencing because traditional method of making ice cream is not really how I really execute my flavor. So when I say I have plantain ice cream, I mean, plantain is literally the base of the ice flavor. It's not me just adding chunks of plantain or flavor of plantain.
You can find the sweet treats at local restaurants and some specialty stores, also online at elcatreats.com. Volvo trucks made a quick stop at Safety Town to teach kids an important concept, but a simple one: Stop, Look, and Wave. Peter, why are you here today?
So we're here today for Stop, Look, Wave. It's a safety campaign focused on schoolchildren to increase safety in traffic. We're doing that together with Safety Town, with the city of Greensboro. We're very happy that we can work together on this because safety for children in traffic is so important.
Stop, Look, Wave, I've actually heard about this from years. It's been going on around the world, but not right here in Greensboro.
No, so we run this since, I don't know, ten, fifteen years all over the world. We've done it in thirty countries already. In April, we started here with Steinberger Elementary. Now December, we will have five hundred children coming through the, through the program. Yeah, it's, 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 well, I'm glad that you heard about it. It's, it's getting, getting a little bit famous.
So, explain how it works. What, what's the premise?
So, safety is super important, right? For, for us, within Volvos, it's in our DNA. And, and now specifically on this, so we develop beautiful safest trucks on the road, but we also focus on behavior of people. And in this case then, specifically for children. So, the idea is as follows. Accidents happen because you don't see things or you're not aware. So what we said, okay, well, then you need to make sure that we get aware of each other. So what do we tell children in traffic? When you, for instance, go through a crossing, you stop, you look around, your surroundings, and then if you see the driver, and it can be a semi-trick, but it can be a car as well, you look at the driver, you look the driver in the eyes, and you wave. And at that moment, there is a mutual recognition, and then there doesn't, and accident doesn't happen anymore.
And have you seen it in practice, working?
Yeah, absolutely. Before I was in the U.S., was in other countries, we went to school, schools came to us, and, and you see children talking about it and practicing it in real life.
And do you practice it in real life? It's not just for kids?
Yeah, of course, sometimes.
We got a Stop, Look, and Wave also before we run out into traffic.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah. It works for children, but it works for adults as well, of course. It's about mutual recognition, and then we thought that this was a fun way to start early. And let's face it, I mean, you know, whenever we have each other on the phone, we always say, drive safe, walk safe, call me when you get there. So the safety in traffic or whilst moving is so important, and this is one of the initiatives that we do.
You know, your job doesn't entail working with children a whole lot, I know. But when you get to, what does it mean to you?
It's fantastic. I mean, it, it, it's almost emotional sometimes. It is fantastic too, because the kids are so dedicated and they're so, you know, taking it all in. It's, it's, I, I wish I did it more.
Learn more about Safety Town and get involved by going to the website. It is safetowngreensboro.com.
The city of Greensboro takes pride in the host of reinvestment activity taking shape in East Greensboro. Equitable investment on the east side has been an ongoing effort to enhance the quality of life for our residents, students, and visitors. A hub of recreation is evidenced through the downtown greenway, which touches all walks in different ways. Construction continues on the final mile of this one-of-a-kind four-mile greenway. The western branch winding from Smith Street to Spring Garden Street is expected to be open in the summer of 2025. The walking and biking greenway connects at least a dozen neighborhoods, including Old Ashboro, Southside, Douglas Park, and the Dunleavy neighborhood, all on the east side. There are more than six hundred million dollars in planned and completed projects along the downtown greenway. This urban loop enhances quality of life with a variety of fitness classes, community walks, and an emphasis on public art, cementing Greensboro's reputation as a creative city. With the connections to the existing and planned trails in the city and the county, this loop is the center of the entire system and will one day connect us from all parts of the community and beyond. A future East Greensboro greenway will connect the J Douglas Galleon Depot in downtown to Barber Park. In collaboration with the city, N C D O T is developing a feasibility study for the route of the East Greensboro greenway. The first phase of the Randallman Road corridor enhanced transportation services and encouraged additional reinvestment on the east side. The city will work with a consulting firm to assist with drafting a plan for the southeast area, which spans approximately eight square miles. Recommendations based on significant public input will guide the future growth and development necessary to improve services and connectivity for a variety of established neighborhoods in the southeast area. The city is investing three million dollars of American Rescue Plan funding to revitalize our oldest golf property with prominent ties to the civil rights movement. The Gillespie Golf Course master plan relies on the facility's historical and cultural relevance as a guide for future improvements. Additionally, we applaud the P G A Reach Foundation for awarding a two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to commission a mural of the Greensboro Six. These courageous men integrated the Gillespie Golf Course in nineteen fifty-five. The city is taking a new approach to meet the needs of the East Greensboro community in a way that has never been done before. Greensboro Public Libraries and Parks and Recreation have set out to create a centralized community hub, the Windsor Chavis Noco Community Complex. Thanks to the advocacy of Congresswoman Kathy Manning, the city was awarded a four-point-three-million-dollar grant from the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Program. This supports several much-needed improvements to Noco Park, which aligns with plans for the sixty-five-million-dollar Windsor Chavis Noco Community Complex. The community-approved design will integrate the existing Windsor Recreation Center, Vance Chavis Library, and Noco Park. In collaboration with Guilford County, the sixty-five thousand-square-foot facility will incorporate public health, social services, and cooperative extension. It won't be long before the shovels begin turning the dirt on the first phase of construction. These initiatives offer a near glimpse of the metamorphosis of East Greensboro.
Welcome to Strike and Flame, Greensboro's first candle bar. Come here for a date night, a girls' night, or just for a little you-time and make your very own scent. Tiffany, what do you like about candles?
I just love fragrance in general. You know, the fact that fragrance creates a memory. So it's like, if you go somewhere, you know, it kind of hits you in the face, and you're like, oh, it can take you back. It's nostalgic, that's kind of what I love about fragrance.
You're so right. Do, do you have like a favorite scent or something that, like, you connect with a memory of childhood or something?
Um, I actually think I do. It's always like Snickerdoodle for me, or anything sweet. It just kind of reminds me of my grandma being in the kitchen and making pie and things like that, so it takes me back.
And did you have candles around the house growing up?
Absolutely, we always had a candle. But our candles then looked a little different. They were not like in a vessel, they were just kind of like the Boda candles, the tall ones that stood alone. So those were all the candles that, but I don't know, I fell in love with them. And also, like, blowing out a candle on birthdays.
Birthdays, and I feel like when I was a kid, we would always fight over who got to blow out the candle, right?
Yes, yes, that takes you back.
When did you make your first candle?
So I made my first candle in two thousand and fourteen. It was kind of personal for me. My burnt candles all the time. I always burnt a Bath &amp; Body Works candle. And then one day, I was changing out a filter, the filter was extremely dirty. And that got me to thinking, because I'm like, why is this so dirty? I know that I just moved here not so long ago, what's going on with this filter? And I did a little research, and regular candles are paraffin. Paraffin is derived from petroleum, so essentially, it feels like you're just breathing in gasoline. And at that time, in two thousand and fourteen, my son was small, and I was health conscious. And I was like, I love candles, so what, how can I not give this up? So I started doing a little research on what type of candles, what type of candle wax I could buy. And I found soy wax. Could not purchase like soy wax candles in two thousand and fourteen, but I ended up finding a company that allowed me to make it. They were like, we can sell you the wax, but you're going to have to make your handle. So that's how it started.
Wow, okay, and then how did it turn into a business?
So it was literally my hobby, a hobby that turned into a business. I had no plans on ever becoming a business owner. I don't even have a background in business. You know, that wasn't my dream at the time, but just my hobby, my love for candles. My family loved the candles that I was making, I was really practicing. And everyone loved them, I would give them out as gifts for the holidays, birthdays. And everyone's like, this is really good, like, where did you get this candle? And I'm like, I made it. So eventually, it just kind of turned into a business around two thousand and eighteen.
And now you help other people do it for fun?
I do, I do, I bring this experience to other people so they can just enjoy it. It's not about just candles or purchasing a candle, it's about creating an experience.
Okay, we're going to create a little experience, let's come over here, because you have picked out some of the most popular scents, and what are they?
So we have sage and rosemary, which is going to give you a little bit of earthiness. And then in the middle, we have amber musk, and then we have lemon on the end. So a little citrus, the lemon is a neutralizer, and amber musk is just the all-time favorite.
So when you come in, if you want to create your own candle, you can pick up to three scents, right?
Correct. So we want you at the wall, and at the wall, you're going to really pick out nine, because we want you to narrow them down, we're going to help you. We actually have scent specialists here who are just going to kind of guide you through the experience. You're going to mix and match, because things that you typically would think go together, probably will not. So we want you to go through your clipboard and just kind of pan out what is going to go.
Okay, so we picked these three, and now what's next? What do we do next?
All right, so next you're just going to line those up inside of your tray, and you're going to start to fill up the jigger with those three fragrances. We're just going to start with my favorite, my favorite is rosemary. So I'm just going to fill my jigger up, yes. Fill my jigger up halfway with the rosemary, because I want that to be my base. All right? And then we're going to kind of come in with the amber musk and the lemon. All right, can you smell it? All right, so just give it a little mix.
Are these oils?
Yes, they are fragrance oils, synthetic fragrance oils that are phthalate-free, so there are no harmful chemicals to them. So we're going to go ahead and come in with a little amber musk.
We are going to start in just a minute. I just wanted to say something to all you people that have come to speak tonight, and, you know, about your concerns and its effect on your property. And I just want you to know that your concerns are important to the Commissioners, but unfortunately, sometime your concerns are determinations we're not charged by the city to consider. And because of that, the Commissioners wanted to redirect you to the front table. There's a handout there that staff has created that will provide you with contact information of people who might be able to help you with your concerns. So I know someone was talking about stormwater, and there's some reference to that there as well. So please consider when you're leaving, picking one up. Recording in progress. Okay, we're all here. We will continue. Thank you. The next item on the regular agenda is item Z twenty-five dash zero seven dash zero one zero, a rezoning request from P U D, Planned Unit Development, to C D C M, Conditional District Commercial Medium for the property identified as thirty-six hundred Reedy Fork Parkway, sixty-four thirty near U.S. Highway twenty-nine North and fifty-seven seventy-one Erickson Road, generally described as north and south of Reedy Fork Parkway, and north and south and east of Eckerson Road, fifty-two point sixty-five acres. And the right of way is item Z twenty-five dash zero seven dash zero one three, a rezoning request from P U D, Planned Unit Development. And the right-of-way is Item Z25-07-013, a rezoning request from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to CM Commercial Medium for the property identified as a portion of Reedy Fork Parkway right-of-way and a portion of Erickson Road right-of-way, generally described as east of US Highway 29 and west of Nathan's Way, 4.59 acres. And thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Magid. Before I started, I wanted to make just one quick note about why the right-of-way for Reedy Fork Parkway is included in this request. I know that's a little different than what we normally see. Usually when a right-of-way is included in the request, it's because there's an annexation, and the right-of-way is needed to make it contiguous with corporate limits. In this situation, the property falls within the original boundaries of the Reedy Fork annexation and rezoning, or original zoning. And then the streets were constructed. And so all of the... The PUD comes with zoning conditions. So all of the zoning conditions that were on the original PUD zoning request would still be in the right-of-way if only the parcels, the private property portions of this request are to be rezoned. So in order to avoid conditions within the right-of-way that don't align with the land uses that are adjacent to it, the right-of-way was included in this request. So that's why you have that second request of PUD to something different for areas within the right-of-way.
Thank you for the clarity.
So this is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows both requests. The first request is 25-07-010, which is approximately 52.65 acres. And that request is to go from Planned Unit Development to Conditional District Commercial Medium. The other request is for the area within the right-of-way, and that is 25-07-013. And that is a rezoning request to go from Planned Unit Development to straight Commercial Medium for approximately 4.59 acres. North and east of the request are zoned Planned Unit Development. South of the request is County Agricultural. And west of the request is Planned Unit Development and County Heavy Industrial. This is the aerial map of the subject property, which shows that the subject property currently contains a real estate sales office, undeveloped land, and portions of Reedy Fork Parkway right-of-way and Erickson Road right-of-way. North of the request, excuse me, contains dedicated drainage way and open space. East of the request contains multifamily dwellings, drainage way and open space. Single-family dwellings are also located farther east. South of the request contains manufacturing and warehousing uses, drainage way and open space, and road right-of-way and undeveloped land. This is the northern portion of the subject property as seen from Reedy Fork Parkway. This is the southeastern portion of the subject property as seen from Reedy Fork Parkway. This is the southwestern portion of the subject property as seen from Erickson Road. This image shows the dedicated open space, drainage way and open space that is located north of the request on old, the old portion of Reedy Fork Parkway. This is also an interesting area to describe, because Reedy Fork Parkway has since been realigned, and so there's a kind of a portion of Reedy Fork Parkway that's just kind of hanging out there that's a dead end. So I will reference that portion as old Reedy Fork Parkway. This image shows dedicated open space that is located east of Reedy Fork Parkway, zoned City PUD. This image shows multifamily dwellings located east of the request, zoned City PUD. This image shows undeveloped land located south of the request on Erickson Road, zoned County Agricultural. This image shows an industrial use located southwest of the request on US 29, zoned County Heavy Industrial. In this image, it shows undeveloped land located west of the request on Reedy Fork Parkway, zoned County HI. And this also shows undeveloped land located west of the request. This is actually from the old Reedy Fork Parkway portion of the road, zoned County HI. This view is facing west on Reedy Fork Parkway. The subject property for Case 10, 07-010, is on both sides of the road, and then the portion, this portion of the road is located, or is the subject property for 07-013. This is facing south on the old portion of Reedy Fork Parkway. The subject property is on both sides of the road, and this is, again, a portion of the request for the right-of-way. And this is facing north on Erickson Road. The subject properties are on both sides of the street and includes this portion of the right-of-way. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the majority of this property as urban general, and a small portion of the property is planned industrial. The Comprehensive Plan's future land use map designates the majority of the property as residential and a small portion as industrial. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness big idea to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed, and the prioritizing sustainability goal to build economic resilience, expanding the local economy's ability to withstand and adjust to disruptions and changes at the regional, national, and global scales. The proposed CDCM and CM zoning districts permit uses that are compatible with the existing uses on adjacent tracks. The requests permit uses that are appropriate, given the property's location next to an interstate highway, and care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential on adjacent tracks. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay. Next, those wish... First, we want to hear from the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amanda Hodiern. I'm the attorney tonight on behalf of the applicant and property owner. My offices are at 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 here in Greensboro. The property owner and applicant is AF Reedy Fork Commercial LLC. That is a subsidiary group wholly owned and controlled by Greenhawk Corporation, which is the owner of the entirety of Reedy Fork Ranch, to the extent it's vacant and undeveloped. So I wanted to mention that off the top as it relates to the fact that this is a very invested stakeholder in the Reedy Fork Ranch vision and continued success of that, of that community. They have owned that property since roughly 2011 and 2012, so about 15 years now. So a lot of the residential development and homes and momentum that you see there is on behalf of Greenhawk, the current property owner. And so tonight, we're here to turn our attention to the southern portion and to look at some of the non-residential components. So thank you, Mr. Carter, for that presentation. You'll hear me mention and allude to some of the same things, so I want to lift up a few aspects of this case. This is the annexation and rezoning from 1999, as you see. At the time, this is just under 1,600 acres. At the time, this was the largest voluntary annexation that the city had ever seen, I learned while handling this case. So it was out there back then, some of you may recall. Those of us who've lived in Greensboro for a while or have served Greensboro for that long, it was way out there. Now, not only is it a very thriving, number-one-selling and started, construction starts community in the triad for the past seven years, but also the rest of northeast Greensboro has come up and around it. Bryan Park is booming in a way that we certainly didn't know it would back in 1999. So the corridor has changed, the houses are there now, the momentum is there. It's long overdue to start looking at some of the other aspects of this big development that were always supposed to happen. It was always supposed to have a commercial component to it. So looking at the subject property, I want to emphasize a couple of things Mr. Carter mentioned. If you pull up GIS and pull the tracks that are the subject property, it is these three tracks outlined in red. However, current conditions look like this. So the three stars, the big change you see is that realignment of Reedy Fork Parkway coming off of the new interchange. So Mr. Carter alluded to an old Reedy Fork and the new area, so that jog in the road, if you will, in this area here, I can actually use my cursor. This area here in the middle is now NC DOT right-of-way, so that's not part of any of the parcels. And because of that, the acreages are actually less than what GIS shows and what, you know, the only information staff would have had to put in the staff report. But there's almost four, over four acres in this right-of-way here. So I just wanted to mention that. So the specifics of the request, it's 47.07 acres that actually exist inside those three tracks as they're currently configured. We're requesting conditional zoning, commercial medium, coming out of that PUD zoning that happened back in 1999. And the goal here is to facilitate appropriately scaled commercial, non-residential-type uses here at this future interstate interchange. I say "future," the infrastructure is there, you've all seen it and heard about it, but the conversion from Highway 29 to interstate corridor is in process. So that is, that is the reason for the changes to that interchange and to the realignments and the right-of-way changes that we've talked about a couple of times tonight. So we want to be responsive to that. We're 25 years down the road, the rooftops are there, we've got this brand-new interchange. We now know that we can, we can more appropriately address the type of non-residential uses that would be appropriate here, not only to support the thriving community of Reedy Fork Ranch, but also to be responsive to the needs of others traveling along the former Highway 29, future interstate corridor, those in the area utilizing Bryan Park or working at several of the employment centers that you saw in Mr. Carter's presentation. The PUD, the current PUD zoning that exists in this area, just to look at that again, excuse me, well, you can't even see it, it's covered by this text box, but it's down here at the southern tip of the area that was brought in. So it's on the outer edge, and so we are looking to remove this from the PUD and take it to a straight CDCM district, because we didn't want to concern or create any uncertainty for everyone who's already bought in and relied upon what Reedy Fork Ranch is as a PUD. We didn't want anyone to be concerned that those commitments and underpinnings that speak to the open space and to all of the metrics of that were being undone or changed. We wanted, we looked at this with staff, saw that, okay, we've met the open space requirements, we've met the recreation requirements, we can pull this out without the rest of the PUD falling apart. So it remains intact, those commitments remain unchanged and unmodified. We're just looking at these three finite parcels. And they were allowed for multifamily, or single-family, or small, small pieces of commercial that were labeled as what at that time was limited business, neighborhood business, and limited office, under Greensboro's prior development ordinance. And as you can imagine, the way you saw where this lays at the southern tip, it was, it was more insular then. It was not imagined that this was going to be an interstate interchange here. It was not imagined that this was going to be the way in and out for not only the majority of folks coming home or leaving, going to work, but also anyone traveling that corridor who may need the commercial services in this part of Greensboro. We did apply a use condition, because of course, we do want to keep it appropriate to being in this residential community and speaking to the fact that we want it to be an amenity and at an appropriate scale to Reedy Fork. And so we, you see here, we've voluntarily precluded or prohibited certain uses that would otherwise be allowed in the CM district. Now, I will tell you, without the PUD, there'd be a lot more conditions here tonight. We'd be talking about other things like buffers and other aspects, but we don't have to do that, because as I mentioned, the existing PUD protections are in place. So talking about buffers, this red area that you see here, that's 18 and a half acres of open space. It's already been platted and dedicated to the city of Greensboro. You see, it lies in between this tract here that we're seeking the zoning for tonight and the residential that exists over here. Similarly, to the north, again, this is a swath that you see that abuts one of the subject properties, already platted and dedicated to the city of Greensboro. So you have these buffers that were already part of the contemplation of the PUD. The benefit of being 25 years down the road is that that's all in place and done, and that, as I mentioned, those commitments were important and are still in place. To the south, this is, this is the sort of the third part of that three-way intersection that's part of our subject request. To the east, our townhomes, and you see that they've got their own platted common area here that, of course, is not going away. We also have a stream corridor here that will have to be integrated into the site planning. And then, of course, your LDO buffer requirements would come into place here as well. So I give you that bit of minutia, just to explain that this really does drop right in to an existing framework of a lot of protections and separations from, again, the very successful Reedy Fork community that we want to make sure remains successful. You heard from staff, this request is being presented as conforming with our Comprehensive Plan guidance. You see here the Future Land Use Map on the right-hand side, the Built Form Map on your left-hand side, and you see that these are urban general areas in built form and future land use is residential. As you all know from your work on this commission, our land use categories are not granular. They're meant to be encompassing in terms of things that also support that residential. And as we all know from looking at those maps from 1999, the Reedy Fork Ranch community was always meant to have aspects of non-residential uses in it to support that residential community. It was always meant to be, if you will, vertically integrated or horizontally integrated, such that all these people, we wanted to live here and now do live here, will have a place that they can go and meet their needs without having to travel into other parts of Greensboro. Neighborhood outreach, we did send a letter out beyond the 750 feet. If you look at the map here, that first ring that you see around the red, that's 750 feet. Looking at how that cut right through that cluster of existing homes, we went ahead and added that additional darker blue to our, to our notice area. We ended up sending almost 450 letters, because we wanted to get to that next swath of city-owned property and bring in that entire, that entire enclave of our residential neighbors. We had a meeting at a church facility on High Cone Road, close to the site. We had almost 40 people attend, had about a two-hour discussion. You know, we had new residents, we had people that had bought homes there in 2001. So it was, it was a great discussion that really reflected the evolution of the community. And I'll be happy to speak to more of the discussion points from that night, if you would like.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, those wishing to speak in opposition, you have a shared 10 minutes.
Chair Magid, Ms. Robin Kapistine online wants to participate. I'm going to see if she can turn her camera on.
Okay. Let's hear from the person online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could we, could we see you? Could you turn your...
Yeah, I'm working on it. There we are. Hello.
Great. Please name an address.
Robin Kapistine, 3133 Middle Creek Lane. I live in Reedy Fork. So thank you very much for the presentation and the materials. There was a meeting a couple of weeks ago that some residences did attend to get more information about this, and during that time, a lot of things were discussed, including about expanding the list of, shall we say, the exception list. So, quote, "All uses in the CM district shall be permitted except." And there was discussion about expanding that slightly to include not allowing a gas station and a movie theater, but I don't see that on the list that was presented tonight. And I know once this gets approved, trying to change and accept, you know, and, you know, except list would be quite challenging. So I wanted to bring that up. And then also, the other thing is, for people that live in Reedy Fork, with the new traffic patterns, okay, develop... with the new traffic patterns, there's a lot of concern, developing, changing all three of those areas at one time to this commercial development. Reedy Fork Parkway is one lane each way. Okay? And the amount of congestion in trying to be able to get into the community and the majority of homeowners do enter and exit that one lane each way. There's, I know this is not part of a traffic concern, but there's a lot of concerns about overdeveloping and, in essence, overcommitting at the onset for all three sections. So that's another concern that I want to make sure that everybody who's voting is aware of. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair.
I would like to know how long she has lived in Reedy Fork.
I have lived in Reedy Fork since September of 2023.
Thank you.
Chair Magid, Morgan Wilkerson online would like to speak.
Really trouble understanding what you're saying.
Morgan Wilkerson is online, and she would also like to speak.
Morgan Wilson?
Wilkerson.
Wilkerson?
Yes, ma'am.
Because there was a Mary Harcy? Harshie?
Ms. Harshie came up and spoke to us before we came back from break and said that she sent an email today and said that speaks for her.
Opposition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's go to the person online then. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Morgan Wilkerson, Reedy Fork Ranch, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27405. And I wanted to expand on what the previous speaker announced. I also attended the July 10th meeting at Lebanon Church on High Cone Road. And she is correct, there was, and we did ask for an addendum to be made to the conditions. And as of today, we have not heard anything else about that. We were told it will be looked into. And the attorney representing Greenhawk took notes about it. But as of right now, we still haven't heard anything. And I've been a resident of Reedy Fork since July of, I'm sorry, June of 20, actually, May of 2018. But there are concerns. And we would like to be supportive, but it's hard to be supportive when we don't have all of the facts yet. And it really seems like it will add more congestion. There's a school in this area. I mean, they just put in the new Loop, the new Diamond interchange there. And I would love to be supportive of this. However, this just seems very, it seems like a need of greed over need. This development has been growing for years. And of course, a commercial planning has been in the works. But however, at this location, at this site, I believe there are better areas to suit the need of the Northeast community than right off of Reedy Fork Parkway where we have homes there. I'm just in opposition to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We have 6 minutes and 33 seconds time to speak in opposition. Would anyone that has spoken online like to speak again? I mean, no? All right, great. We'll move to the rebuttal.
That's fine, thank you. Thank you, Chair Magid, and thank you to the speakers. Appreciate that input. So we did have a question. As I remember it in per my notes, we had one question at the neighborhood meeting that asked if we could eliminate gas stations. And so we did take that back and discuss it under advisement. And the other speaker is correct. We have not presented an addendum or an additional condition to staff and to you in light of the fact that this is a future interstate interchange. We felt like that, you know, that that was an appropriate commercial use to be a possibility here. The movie theater mention, I will admit, I did not expressly catch that at the meeting. But I will say, I had another speaker who came up to me at the meeting and said she had just moved from the Palladium area and how much she wanted a movie theater. So I say that anecdotally to say that we were intentional about our uses to speak to things that would be of value and be an amenity to people who could walk to this, you know, walk to this anchor, if you will, of their community and that would be useful to others who live in the area. In terms of traffic improvements, when we went through the protocol for filing a zoning, I talked to Mr. Tipton about a traffic study. And he acknowledged, you know, I would rather have the traffic study that allows me to look at actually what's going to happen. So the speaker was right. You know, we want to see this, not just all at once and then it all happens. The way it works is that he'll see it as it's actually proposed in real time. So he can study the real numbers, the real square footages, the real trip generation, rather than just the pie-in-the-sky manifestation of what that condition list leaves on his desk. So he's reserved the right, it's in your staff report, that there will be a TIA asked for at the time of TRC submittal for each of these site plans, for each of these tracks. However, that comes to the table. And so those items will be studied then. And as you know, whatever traffic improvements they say are needed, that's what the developer applicant would have to do. Let's see. We also talked about, you know, is this too much or the right place? And again, I want to emphasize and suggest to the commission, I don't think this is so much a question of is this the right land use? Because again, the land use for this has been established for 25 years. This is a matter of being responsive and reactive to the conditions that are on the ground now, 25 years later. And this now being the part of the community that is right by the interstate interchange and understanding that this is where those cars are already coming and going. So the cars are already there. Let's be responsive to that and put those uses that support all those cars where they're already having to travel anyway, rather than somewhere else in the site where, you know, they might have to pass by some of those residential streets and residential neighbors. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions I have with me tonight. Lee Bryant from Evans Engineering. He's the civil engineer for Greenhawk, working on Reedy Fork for 15 years. So he's a great resource if you have any technical or site design-type questions.
I didn't really want to say anything. I do live in Reedy Fork, but I just wanted to add this part. Amanda, could you mention, could you share? This is the time, okay, okay. This came up in the community meeting. How similar is this to the other development? I think someone mentioned the Sedgfield-Jamestown-type idea. Did it give people an idea of what it would look like?
So again, you know, we're not here with site planning, so I'm not speaking to architecture or specific tenants. But Mr. Downing is correct. There was a meeting, a question asked at the meeting, you know, let us, what can we visualize as to, when you talk about a commercial area near neighborhoods, what can we think of? And so we talked about the shopping center where Publix is located, that Corey developed, that is adjacent to Sedgfield, also supports the Addams Family, Addams Farm. Excuse me. My daughter's in a play, Addams Family. It's on my brain. So also supports that residential community. And it very much speaks to other passersby who use those major arterials and thoroughfares in that area, but is also very heavily relied upon and, you know, I would certainly think is an amenity to those nearby residences. Another one that came up in my discussions in preparations for tonight was Stony Creek in eastern Guilford County and how that supports that neighborhood. We also talked about Palladium. That's, you know, size-wise, that might be a bit bigger, but in the sense that it is a qualitative amenity to the folks who live near it, but also to others who may want to come to it without having to, you know, you know, swarm that, the actual folks who live there. They can utilize the restaurants, the shops, the entertainment, and then go back home without overburdening the actual people who live in the community. We also, you know, we've got sidewalks everywhere out here. We've got walking trails. So, you know, we also hope that this will capture some pedestrian and non-vehicular traffic and speak to transportation issues that way as these communities are planned to do.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Hang on, we need the rebuttal from the opposition.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't do the rebuttal. I apologize. Rebuttal for the opposition. I'm sorry, you have five minutes to speak. It's been a long meeting.
Thank you. It's Robin Kapustine again. So thank you for the opportunity again. I just want to state for the record that personally and a lot of the people that I am friendly with in my little section within Reedy Fork, we are adamantly against a gas station. I understand the logic behind it, but we are adamantly against it. So I'm not, if there's no change with that, I am not for this proposal as it stands today. The other thing is, I know that traffic studies are not part of this, but I do think the, I think a lot of things changed once the city of Greensboro developed the Diamond Interchange right at the footsteps of the entrance to Reedy Fork. And there's a big traffic concern there. I understand this is a zoning or rezoning and not a traffic study meeting. However, for the record, I am not in favor of you voting for this as it stands today, not all three plots, I'll call them plots, I think you call it something else, with how it stands today. So thank you for your time.
I just had one question. Did you attend the community meeting?
Yes, I did.
And the reaction at the community meeting, could you bring a little bit of that forward so that we could? To this project? Was it positive? Was it negative? Was it?
I think it was a mixture. I think that, you know, look, we are in desperate need of more retail services in the area. There is a lot of growth, not just with Reedy Fork, okay? There's a lot of growth and people are chomping at the bit for options, okay? So there's a lot of positive. However, there's also a lot of concern because basically it's right on top of the Diamond Interchange. It's right on top of the entrance to Reedy Fork. And it's not one section. It's basically all corners. The only corner that's not being developed is because it can't, there is nothing to develop because it's a road to get onto 29, okay? So there's concern as well. So it's very much a mix.
Thank you.
A lot of positive, but also a lot of trepidation.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Do we have anybody online who wanted to speak? Does Ms. Wilkerson?
Yes, Ms. Wilkerson also would like to speak.
Okay. Let's hear from Ms. Wilkerson.
Yes, it's Morgan Wilkerson again. And I would just like to end it by saying as well, I understand that Greensboro, change happens. But again, I really think that that area is just a bad location for that. There are some other locations that I think would better suit this. I am all for growth, but I just don't think that that is the area. It is in our backyard and it's just, it's congested. There's issues at that Diamond Interchange already. People are going the wrong way. Again, at the meeting, there's mixed response. Of course, people, some people would like to see some things near us. However, I just agree with the previous speaker and I just feel as though that location may not be the best location for that. Summit Avenue, right there, maybe that could be a better location. But I just don't think that's the best location. And going back to what was stated by the attorney from Greenhawk, I believe her name was Amanda, cannot, I'm sorry. I apologize for not remembering your last name. But yes, at the meeting, she did not, I want to be clear the record, she did not say that there would be an addendum to this. What she, what was mentioned was about a gas station and some other locations that people wanted to add to the conditions. And we were told it was going to be looked into to see if it could be added. But that's where I'm trying to say that we have not been made aware of anything. We weren't told. We're kind of out of the loop. And it's kind of frustrating at this point because that would have been nice to have known before tonight's meeting. Our email addresses were given, but we have not been updated. And I really, I'm nervous about not receiving any updates as a resident of Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you. And could you just state your address for the record one more time?
I am Reedy Fork, Greensboro, 27405. I can put into the chat.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Without further objection, we will close the public hearing. Are there any comments or thoughts to be shared here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I can make a few comments. So as was stated, that this was developed as a PUD in 1999. And I did further research that the first development started in 2003, 2003, 25 years later. And in fact, in 2018, they state that an environmental assessment, they found no significant impact at the time, right, 2018. Now that it has been major change and infrastructure improvement, there is likely due for some new phase development and traffic studies, which that would take care of itself. But I do want to give much respect to my neighbors, Robin and Megan, I'm sorry, Morgan, who were both at the meeting and along with the 40 individuals, along with Amanda and her team. We know there would be, there would definitely be a need for more continuous community engagement. In fact, I want to highlight this. Amanda and her team went above and beyond, just beyond the 750 feet. She even expanded that radius to encourage other neighbors to have buy-in at their community events. I think that speaks volumes of wanting the community to be involved. I do believe this is thoughtful development. Now, I would tell you, if this was not thoughtful development, I live in the neighborhood, I would not be supporting it, period, okay? Favoritism, but yeah. And so I do live in the neighborhood, but I also believe that this is going to be great for the community. I remember four years ago, this was during an election season, but there was concerns from neighbors as to what is going to happen in this area. But I would tell you, just a few months ago, a few weeks ago, the roads have been repaved. And so we have confidence that this would be a step in the right direction. Now, I do not speak on behalf of all the neighbors of Reedy Fork. But at that particular event, I did share that I just so happened to serve on this board. And I did ask the neighbors what were their sentiment. And the majority seemed to say that they are in favor. Now, of course, that means we want more engagement, of course, and dialogue and updates. But this seems to be a step in the right direction. And last point, it is consistent with our 2040 comprehensive plan. This has always been in the works for the past 25 years. And now we are seeing the fruits of the labor or this coming to fruition. So I think this is a great step in the right direction. And the number of seniors that live in Reedy Fork, they have the possibility of having access to fresh foods and resources and a store, something of that magnitude. So we are excited and thank you for this time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Piggybacking on what Mr. Downing had said, I was peripherally involved when Starmount bought Reedy Fork Ranch. And in looking at the long-range plan, this was always going to be commercial on the front end. It's all they ever thought about because it was US 29. And in the ensuing years, it's now going to be an interstate. Reedy Fork has been realigned. The Parkway has been realigned. It's setting it up to be an interstate interchange. What I see with these three parcels is not intrusion, but rather buffering for the existing area of Reedy Fork. So I understand the need to adjust the zoning from a flexibility standpoint, and I'll be supporting it.
I'll be supporting it as well. I echo the comments of Commissioner Downing and Commissioner Skeens. I would also like to add that I think that a developer who puts together such a thought- I would also like to add that I think that a developer who puts together such a thoughtful plan like this deserves an, an element of trust, that he will, they will continue to develop in a manner that is thoughtful and, and responsible. And it, it struck me as ironic that Ms. Wilkerson's comment was about, you know, in our backyard, and yet, this developer has put in a, what I consider to be a pretty massive green space buffer between their literal backyard and where this rezoning is happening. So, I, I, I support this. I, I think it's a very thoughtful plan. What we don't want to do is build massive interstate interchanges and then have everybody have to drive from their house into town to, to get their basic retail needs taken, taken care of. So, density around interchanges is a great idea, but it has to be supported with the right commercial and retail opportunities.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was around during those days, Ms. Skeens, so I remember. I will be supporting this. I think it's well-planned development. I think prior to that, we had Adams Farm, and, and I think this was the next one. It was larger, whatever, but I will be supporting it. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that Ms. Skeens, Ms. O'Connor, Mr. Gilmer, were very involved in this. And I had never been out there to Reddy Fork. It's quite an amazing development, quite an amazing development. But you don't see any commercial around it. So, for the purposes of people that live there, I think this is a great project, and I'll be in favor of it. Okay, so I'd like to, I, I, we'll entertain a motion, please.
This is Warshay Downing. I'd like to make a motion regarding agenda item Z 2507010. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning requests for the properties at 3600 Reddy Fork Parkway, 6430 near US Highway 29 North, and 5771 Eckerson Road from PUD Plan Unit Development to CD CM Conditional District Commercial Medium to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and it's, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed CD CM zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding areas and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Gilmer. Now, I will take, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department, and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to the public hearing at Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, City Council meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. I'm just waiting to...
We've also got the right-of-way. We need an action on...
Oh, sorry, we forgot about, okay, we have to do 13 now. Okay. We need the, yeah, we, we need the case up so I can read it. Did I read, oh, I read it already. It was included in the first one. Okay, so now we're ready for a motion for 0700013. Would someone entertain that motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll read it again. Okay. Z 2507013, portions of Reddy Fork Parkway and Eckerson Road Consistency Statement. Okay. So, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning requests for the properties at a portion of Reddy Fork Parkway, right-of-way in a portion of Eckerson Road, right-of-way from PUD Plan Unit Development to CM Commercial Medium to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed CM zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Gilmer. And now, we will, I will, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Let's see. This, this approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department, and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 City Council meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Okay. When we're back to the regular agenda, item PLP 25-30 and Z 25-07-011, an original zoning request from County CZLI, Conditional Zoning Light Industrial, to City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial for the property identified as 725, 729, and 749 Knox Road, and 5437 and 5441 Marley Drive, generally described as east and south of Knox Road, north and east of Marley Drive, and north of Interstate 85/40, con currency, 52.846 acres, and item PLP 25-30 and Z 25-07-012, an original zoning request for County G Agricultural and County CZLI, Conditional Zoning Light Industrial, to City LI Light Industrial for the property identified as a portion of Interstate 85/40, con currency, and Mill Street Road, right-of-way, generally described as south and east of Marley Drive, west of Bloomfield Road, and west of AT&amp;T Drive, 3.6 acres, and that's the right-of-way for this case. And hello, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Magid. As I stated, this is a, subject properties contain approximately 56.446 acres total. 52.846 acres of that are private property, and 3.6 acres are road right-of-way. The subject property is located east and south of Knox Road and north and east of Marley Drive, north and north of Interstate 8540. The first request, Z-25-07-011, is an annexation and original zoning request from County CZLI, Conditional Zoning Light Industrial, to City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial. And the second case, 07012, is an annexation and original zoning case, original zoning request, pardon me, from County Agricultural, County CZLI, a lot of districts in this one, to City LI, pardon me. North of the request is owned County Agricultural and County CZLI. Southeast of the request is owned County Agricultural and County CZLI. South of the request is owned County Agricultural, County RS40, Residential Single Family, County CP Corporate Park, and City CDLI, pardon me, and City BP Business Park, and City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial. South of the request is owned County Agricultural and County RS40. The subject properties currently contain a single, single-family dwellings, agricultural land, and a portion of the Interstate 8540 right-of-way. North and west of the request contain single-family dwellings, agricultural land, and undeveloped land. East of the request contains undeveloped land. And south of the request contains single-family dwellings, offices, and the Interstate 85 and 40, and undeveloped land. This image shows the southern portion of the subject properties as seen from Marley Drive. This image shows the northern portion of the subject properties as seen from Knox Road. This image shows the driveway to a single-family dwelling located northwest of the request on Knox Road, zoned County Agricultural and County Light Industrial. This image shows undeveloped land located northwest of the request on Knox Road, zoned County Agricultural. This image shows undeveloped land located north of the request on Knox Road, zoned County Agricultural. This image shows undeveloped land located northeast of the request on Bloomfield Road, zoned County Light Industrial. And this image shows a section of Interstate 8540 as part of the right-of-way request, zoned County Agricultural and County LI. This is also the subject property for 07012. This view is facing east on Mill Stream Road. The subject properties for Z-25-07-012 include this portion of Mill Stream, Mill Stream right-of-way and the Interstate 8540 right-of-way. This image shows a single-family dwelling located west of the request on Marley Drive, zoned County RS40. This image shows another single-family dwelling located west of the request on Marley Drive, zoned County RS40. This view is facing west on Marley Drive. The subject properties are directly behind you in this view. And this view is facing east on Marley Drive. The subject properties here are located at the end of the road. This view is facing southwest on Knox Road. The subject properties are on the left. And this view is facing northeast on Knox Road. The subject properties are on the right. This is the condition which was submitted by the applicant and advertised associated with the request. And in recommending approval of the request, staff noted that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future built form map currently, currently designates the subject properties as plant industrial with a small portion as urban general. The Comprehensive Plan's future land use map designates the location, again, primarily as industrial and a small portion as residential. The proposed original zoning request supports the growing economic competitiveness goal to increase and preserve the inventory of developable, developable sites compatible with corporate and industrial uses, and the prioritizing sustainability goal to build economic resilience, expanding the local economy's ability to withstand and adjust to disruptions and changes at the regional, national, and global scales. Staff noted that the proposed City CDLI and LI zoning districts would allow land uses that are compatible with the general character of the area, and that the request would permit uses that are present in the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. I have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay. Let's see, the applicant, if you will come forward, you have 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening again, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Zoning Commission. My name is Mike Fox, and I represent the applicant, Landport Investments and Carroll Industrial Development. Here tonight, my address is 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800 in downtown Greensboro. I do have a number of folks with me tonight from the client, Al Leonard, Philip Williams, and Paul Smith. We also have two other additional folks on our team, experts, Aaron Govea, who's a traffic engineer with Davenport, and Adam Carroll, who's a civil engineer with Timmons Group, in case you have any questions. Staff, as always, has been great to work with, and they did a excellent job of describing the, describing the project. I'm having trouble getting it, oh, I know, here, hang on a second. There we go. Sorry. Thank you. So, you've seen this from staff, so I'm not going to repeat this other than to highlight the fact that this particular property is currently zoned light industrial in Guilford County, and that's exactly the zoning that we're asking for here in the original annexation. We're bringing it into the city because we feel that will help market the site because we'll have quicker access to water and sewer that will be needed to fully support any industrial development on this site. Of note, and I'll highlight this a little bit later, in the county, currently, we were zoned for up to 600,000 square feet in, in industrial use. And in this particular plan and this particular request, we're only looking at roughly 368,800 square feet. So, it's a pretty significant reduction, about a 30% reduction in the square footage that we're looking at here. The existing land use, as you can see in the purple, it is surrounded by a lot of other industrial properties, so very consistent with what your staff has highlighted, and I think, you know, illustrates why your staff was supportive of this, of this project and this request. Same with the Comprehensive Plan. It calls for industrial, you know, on this site. You can see it highlighted there. Some of the reasons cited in the staff report, it continues to support the growing economic competitiveness and futures, furthers the goal of preserving the inventory of developable sites compatible with corporate and industrial uses. And note, it is in Tier One of your growth, so it is top and center. Our economy in the region continues to be very strong. We've had a lot of great job announcements recently, and light industrial and warehouse and distribution continue to be an important cornerstone of that economic growth in this area. So, this is very consistent with what is going on in the entire region, and particularly in Greensboro, and, and this part of Greensboro as well. This is a concept plan that we have at this point. You can see the two buildings that we've tentatively laid out. This is not the final site plan, but this is just something that we're looking at right now. We do not have a, a tenant signed up yet, and so, depending on who that actually is, this might be altered some, depending on the tenant's need. But in general, the bufferings, the setbacks, and the access will remain the same, obviously. Those are as required by your code, and the access, we'll talk about just a little bit more in a minute. I want to talk about our outreach with the community. For this particular case, we sent out letters at the beginning of July, on July 1, inviting our neighbors to a, a neighborhood meeting on July 9. We did not get any response from that, although we have been in communication in the last few days with, with at least one neighbor, and have had, you know, productive conversations in that regard. There are some things we agree on and some things that we don't agree on, and that's okay. That's what this process is about. And, but we are committed. We do know that, you know, this decision from this board tonight is not the final decision. Because it's an annexation request, it goes to the City Council regardless of, of the recommendation here. We obviously hope that you will give us a favorable recommendation on both the annexation and the original zoning. But we know we'll be back in this room in about 30 days, and we've committed to continue to talk to the neighbors about things that are concerning to them. It, it is important to know, we had a similar engagement in 2021. That was when we had the original zoning in, or not original zoning, but the, the latest zoning in, in this property in which we had, got the light industrial zoning approved in the county, and had good engagement and discussion with a number of the neighbors on Marley Drive and nearby as well. So, we've actually had good conversations with these folks for several years. I do want to, before we finish up, I want to ask Aaron with Davenport to come up and speak just briefly about some traffic concerns that have been raised by the neighbors, and, and be available to answer any questions that you may have. Aaron?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Govea. I'm a traffic engineer with Davenport. The address is 4600 Marriott Drive, Suite 350 in Raleigh, 27612. I just want to take a couple of minutes to walk you through the traffic analysis that's been done for the project to date, with the understanding that the original traffic impact analysis was completed in August of '21, and that was done for 600,000 square feet of light industrial. Then in December of 2023, a technical memo was completed with only 368,000... Then in December of twenty-twenty-three, a technical memo was completed with only three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet of light industrial. So it greatly reduced the overall number of trips, as well as the square footage, obviously. Davenport studied the approved study intersections in conjunction with working with NCDOT and found that only turn lanes are going to be required at both of the site access points to help mitigate the impact of traffic for this development. At the time of the analysis, all of the intersections were shown to operate at Level of Service C or better, so it's pretty good. It's, it's what we would call an acceptable level of service. I am aware there's some traffic concerns along Knox Road and specifically at the intersection of Knox Road and Mount Hope Church Road. So I want to take just a moment to address that, particularly near the gas station and then near the Publix Distribution Center. NCDOT is aware of, of issues. They have worked with the community in the past to address some of those issues and believe that that has been accomplished. This particular development doesn't have any recommendations that far to the west. It was studied and no recommendations were required by NCDOT. But NCDOT is aware of this project. They're aware of other projects in the area and are able to work with developers of future projects and, you know, through other DOT projects that may come about in the future to help address any additional concerns. For this development, the NCDOT required improvements were at the western access point on Knox Road. It was an eastbound right turn lane and a westbound right, left turn lane. And then at the eastern intersection, a little further away, an eastbound right turn lane into the site. And that's what has been required by NCDOT and agreed upon with Greensboro DOT. So with those improvements, the analysis indicates there'll be adequate capacity at these studies intersections to address the traffic for this development. And if you had any other questions about that or the TIE process, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
I had a question. You know, I, I noticed on Knox Road, at the site access one, it said, recommended to provide a right turn lane and a left turn lane. But I didn't see any other access point or any other place like you just described which had a, a turn lane.
So on the image that's on the screen, can you see the mouse on the left side of the image? That would be what we're calling site access one, and there should be a right turn lane and a left turn lane there in the future. And then the blacker driveway at the top of the page is site access two. There will be a right turn lane required.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you, Aaron. And my final point, I would like to highlight the reduction in the amount of square footage that we're, you know, looking to build is, will result in a sixty percent reduction in the traffic from what is currently allowed. So we're currently allowed, you know, significantly more traffic than what we're proposing to come in with this new development. And this light industrial traffic would be significantly less than if you filled fifty-two acres up with single-family homes. Those generate a lot more trips every day than, than, than this type of development. One final thing, we are, you know, committed to working with our neighbors. I know any concerns they have about, you know, buffering landscaping screening, we'll work with them on that. All the lighting, of course, is going to be compliant with the city code. We'll, our lighting will stay on our property. It will not throw light on anyone else's property. And, and we'll definitely work, continue to work with them to hear any concerns they have. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and would appreciate a positive recommendation for this project.
Ms. Gaines has a question.
Just to bring this back to center. You're currently zoned LI in the county. You want to come into the city with the exact same zoning, LI. I'm assuming that so that you can get some water and some sewer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gaines.
So in terms of the use of the property, and I know that the size of the building can change because you haven't conditioned it. But you're basically going from LI to LI, from the city, from the county to the city to get water and sewer and develop it.
Yes, ma'am. It's not more complicated than that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You have a shared total time of ten minutes. Please line up over here by the podium and give us your name and address. Do we have any people online?
We do, we do, Chair Maggie.
Okay. Okay. First, first I would like to hear from, let's see, Mr. Wilson. Is Mr. Wilson here?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you speak first, please? Thank you.
Mark Wilson, fifty-four twenty, Marley Drive, McLeansville. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, we would like for Charlotte to start and then Aaron, and then I'd like to wrap up.
Okay, fine, fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Charlotte Bennett, fifty-four-ten, Marley Drive. I'd like to start off by saying this is my first introduction to the developer and his attorney. I have not been informed as of yet. I purchased my house on Marley Drive, January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. I've spent the last year and a half of, of my, with my property, creating a wildlife sanctuary on my property. I've heard you speak about a better Greensboro, a better place to live, and that's exactly what I've done with my property, is try to make it a better place to live by creating a wildlife sanctuary. There was originally a pond on my property that was, in essence, over the last several years, taken away, that we have reintroduced to the property and recreated the pond where we now have wildlife. Many forms of wildlife, including deer, miscellaneous birds, foxes, things of that nature. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second. As I had said previously, this was my first introduction to the attorney's office. I have not had any previous engagement with their office or with the developer's office as far as the plans that are taking place at the end of Marley Drive and Knox Road. So I'm very concerned as I listen to you talking about developers and how much forethought and planning they have gone into with the developments that they're creating around the area, whereas this particular developer has not notified the neighbors at all, to my knowledge. And there are five of us here from the development of Marley Acres that can all contest to not being informed of any of the goings-on with the properties that he is discussing. Having said that about the wildlife on my property, I'm concerned because my property is currently an agricultural property and he would like to make it a city property, which includes all the, the space in between Marley Acres, Marley Drive, Marley Acres, and Knox Road. As I have said, being a, making my property a wildlife sanctuary, I don't know what that is going to mean for me as far as the city becoming involved. And I, I really would like to know what that will mean for me, other than, as he says, water, sewer, electricity from a city standpoint.
Can you tell me one more time your address? Was it fifty-four-ten?
Fifty-four-ten, Marley Drive.
Okay.
I have three and a half acres.
Okay. So, Mr. Kirkman, would that property at fifty-four-ten be, become part of the city if it's not part of this annexation?
No, it would not. This, they request is only for the subject property, so the actions that they're referring to won't have any impact as far as the jurisdiction of the other existing properties which are still in the county.
Okay, so you won't be part of the city. You'll still be part of the county.
Okay. It's still, still zoned agricultural?
Yes, everything, just like you have it now.
Okay.
Okay.
What will change is the development of large warehouses, which includes, even though he states that they'll make sure that all lighting and things of that nature will only affect their property.
Right.
What else, what it will affect is the wildlife that encompasses that area, including the different birds that are coming to my pond, the deer and such.
Yeah, it, it is currently zoned for LI. It, it, you know, in the county. So as it exists right now, they could build the exact same thing on the property.
You are correct. You are correct. But I also would like to point out, as you had stated when you're talking about building these apartment complexes and places for people to live, you currently have listed five properties that he has purchased that he's going to convert into warehousing, a total of fifty-six acres. This same property could have been used for single-family housing.
Mr. Kirkman, could that occur if the, if the land is, is CZ LI, could it become?
Right. Under the current zoning designation, it could not. Light industrial zoning doesn't allow residential uses. They would have to rezone the property to some type of residential district.
Right. So as it is zoned right now, it could not ever be residential.
Okay.
Just, just, we're getting clarity as you're asking the questions, and we appreciate your questions because we're getting clarity. So thank you so much.
I'll let my next neighbor speak.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ma'am, I'm Aaron Butler, and I'm not going to take but just a moment. I'm letting.
We need your name and address.
Yes, Aaron Butler. My address is fifty-four nineteen, Marley Drive, and I've lived there for forty-six years. My wife and I built a house there and everything. It's a nice, pretty little, quiet, quaint neighborhood, and we'd love for it to stay there. But quickly, that meeting the gentleman was talking about four years ago, it would have filled up this here room almost with the people against this, the annexation, but I am against. And if you lived on Marley Drive, every one of y'all would be against it also. But I am against the rezoning and the annexation because we're still in the county and we would like to remain that way, ma'am.
But, but just to clarify, and I drove down your street today. It's a lovely street. I, I drove down your street today. It's a lovely street.
It's a beautiful, and it dead ends at fifty-four thirty-two, fifty-four thirty, and that's where the street stops.
Yep.
And I'm concerned there'd be right-of-way traffic going in and out of there.
I don't think there is an, an exit access, you know.
Right.
It's intended on Knox Road from the, from the information we've been given.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so you're not going to be annexed into the, you're still going to be in the county. So thank you so much.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Again, Mark Wilson, fifty-four twenty, Marley Drive. You know, two wrongs don't make a right. When this was rezoned with the county, the, the neighbors filled up the whole room. And they were against it and they still are. And so I'd like to speak to why I think two wrongs don't make a right. There's nothing light about light industrial. There could be four hundred, each day, there could be four hundred eighteen-wheelers or transfer trucks going up and down Knox Road. And we don't think that Knox Road can support that. We're very concerned about the danger that we already have at this intersection. We've got the picture up here. So only about a year or two ago, with all the congestion that was there, there was a fire on Knox Road at a building. And the fire trucks couldn't get to the building. And right here, it was where the congestion was, at this intersection of Mount Hope Church Road and Knox Road. And so we're concerned that allowing this will make it more dangerous. It's hard to get through there because of the congestion. And so if you look at the estimate on the trips per day, it's fourteen eighty-eight per day with a hundred per hour AM peak and two fifty-two per hour at PM peak. And so that's, what I've come up with through my research is that you could have two hundred trucks enter and two hundred trucks exit every day. And the road just won't support it, and that's what the neighbors tell me over and over again, that it just won't work because we've had a congestion problem here. Now, if you, if you, if you look to the right of that truck, the large transfer truck, that's the property across from the truck stop. The truck stop's on the left, and the property on the right is on the northwest side. For that property, the developer was told, it's my understanding, that the developer was told that they have to make improvements in that area, on that intersection. DOT's been involved, but it's my understanding that the developer of that property is going to have to make improvements before that property can be developed. Well, for this project, those four hundred trucks, they've got to go through this intersection to get to the interstate. And it's just going to be very dangerous. With the congestion we've had, it's, it's just not going to work. The surrounding use that we have right now, when I look, all I see is agriculture and residential. And we've already had Commissioner Nichols speak to the need for housing. Why are we not getting housing instead of distribution centers over and over? We, there are two on McConnell Road. One's vacant and another one's partially vacant. So I don't think this would be consistent with what I see on, in the area. These trucks are going to cause noise, pollution, fumes, congestion, and, and danger. There could be obnoxious lights at night. And it seems that this discriminates us, that it harms our property values, makes them less desirable, makes the area more dangerous. And it would be harmful to older adults and to people with disabilities. It's going to make them hard, make it harder for them to get through there. We've already had a problem with emergency vehicles with those fire trucks not being able to get through there. What if somebody has a heart attack? What if something else happens? You've got four hundred trucks. If you have four hundred trucks per day during an eight-hour period, that would be one truck per minute. During a twenty-four-hour period, roughly, it would be one every three minutes. And with the congestion we're already having there, it's just not going to work. If you look to the left of that big truck, there's somebody going the wrong way on the street. And this is something that happens all the time. But the reason it happens is congestion. There's too much congestion. And the city has already recognized this when they said that that property on the northwest side had to be, there had to be improvement, improvement to this intersection before that property on the northwest side can be developed. So why are we not requiring that of this developer? Because all of those trucks are going to go through this same intersection. So it seems to me that the city's behavior is inconsistent, arbitrary, capricious, and it discriminates against us, the neighbors. This is going to be hard on us. It's already hard on us, but those transfer trucks, it's going to be hard to negotiate through all of those. Sorry.
You have like sixteen seconds left, but you'll be able to speak at the rebuttal.
Okay.
So we just wanted to leave you there.
The city needs, well, I'll talk again, but the city needs more police officers, maybe a hundred more police officers, and doesn't seem to be getting them because of the salary.
Thank you so much.
I have a question for the speaker.
Madam Chairman, I have a question. Oh, I didn't hear that, sorry.
The photo that you have up here, where is the subject property on this photo?
Back about half mile, a mile back this way to the east on Knox Road.
Okay. Thank you.
But all the trucks have to go through this intersection to get to interstate.
Just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Past the fire station, right?
No.
Okay.
I don't know which fire station you're speaking about, but there, there was one way back down Knox Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's another one, Aaron can maybe help me. There's another one, Greensboro Fire Department could not get through this intersection when they were called for the fire, and they were coming, I think, down Mount Hope Church Road. Would that be right?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And now Paul, Mr. Gilmer.
I'm just curious, where, where are you getting these 400 truck figure from? Maybe I messed up in your presentation.
Well, sir, I, I keep asking the same question that you're asking, and they keep referring me back to what I did give you, which was the, the peak and the total. So they said total per day would be 1488, but they, they don't break that down. And I think they should so that we can all be informed. So I'm having to try to figure out how many trucks that would be. And that, it's a lot of trucks when you think about it. So there are going to be 1488 trips per day. And some of those are going to be passenger vehicles, and some of those are going to be transfer trucks, 18-wheelers. And so the peak for, for an AM hour, like it says, 150, for a PM hour is 252. So I think a significant portion for, say, a distribution center, let's assume they put in a distribution center. I'm assuming that a significant portion would be transfer trucks. And you have the, the traffic experts here, I've spoken to some of them, and I don't think that 400 a day is an unreasonable estimate.
Okay, thank, thank.
Mr. Chipton, is that a reasonable estimate?
I would actually defer to the traffic engineer for the site for the most part, but I'd.
Who would that be?
That was Ms. Goby, who spoke a few minutes ago.
Okay.
But I, I will add that due to the nature of the site being light industrial without an identified final user, the light industrial trip generation numbers does typically grossly overestimate for some of the smaller warehousing or, or things like that. So it's a conservative worst-case scenario kind of a gives you, but she can probably speak more to that.
Yep, yep, okay, technical review. Okay, one question. Did you receive the letter that the city sent? Did you receive the letter from the city that was sent to you as well as the one from the developer? You should have received two notifications, did you receive two?
Yes, Madam Chair, but may I say something?
Sure, no, I do.
This, this has been one of the main problems I've had in this matter. I've only had five days' notice of this. Okay, so we all know that July 4th is a holiday and people go out of town.
I heard about this, I heard about this.
But I didn't go out of town until the weekend after July 4th. Well, I didn't get this until the night of the 15th when I came back home.
Right.
And so.
That's okay, thank you.
I got the letter from the developer, but it was on the 15th, and his meeting was on the 9th. So it was impossible for me to even go. And so I think, and then as far as the cities, I got that on the 15th as well.
Okay.
And I think it would be better if the city would send out notices 25 days ahead instead of like 15 or 18 because of these holidays.
I think this is, this is state law, isn't it, a state law when it has to be sent?
Yeah, General Statute 160D 601 calls for the first notice to go out between 10 and 25 days prior to the hearing.
Yep.
It calls for the notices to go out on two successive weeks. So there is also a problem, I, I would think, where if you send the first one out too early or send in the second one out pretty far in advance of the hearing as well. But again, state law, 10 to 25 days for the first notice.
Thank you for that clarity, thank you so much, thank you so much. Now we're at the rebuttal, the applicant will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I just would like to address a, a couple of points and not belabor them. Obviously, the annexation of this property does not require any other property owner to be annexed that doesn't want to be annexed. And our plan, we do not have any intention or plan to connect to Marley Drive. So those were a couple of the concerns that were raised. I certainly, and I want to go back to, you know, maybe this is a good example. You can see the large development just south of Interstate 40 there and 85. And then if you look at this, this is what's currently zoned, light, you know, light industrial. And then here, here's your future land use. I say that for two reasons. One, what we're asking here tonight fits perfectly with the plan the city has spent decades developing and implementing. But I do say that with sympathy and understanding for Mr. Butler. You know, he's been there 46 years. I guarantee you, it didn't look like it does now 46 years ago. And I'm sure he was in much more of a bucolic countryside setting. And, you know, unfortunately for him, you know, the city has come to him, and it's going to keep going and it's going to go past him. That's just the way it's going to work. I would, and that doesn't mean he can't be upset about that, but we respect that and understand that. We've had very respectful conversations. But I do want to point out that, you know, you know, Marley Drive is built right on the interstate. And that, that interstate was there, you know, at that time, and it's been there for a long time. And that particular stretch of interstate from where 40 and 85 join together is one of the five busiest stretches of interstate in the entire United States. That was, you may have heard of the Buc-E's Development out in Alamance County. That was exactly why they wanted to be there, was, that was, that's one of the five busiest sections of interstate. So unfortunately for those neighbors, they, they live right on that interstate. There's going to be noise, there's going to be traffic, there's going to be congestion. We're not going to add anything near that. I mean, we're going to be quiet certainly compared to that. And we're, you know, agreed to continue to work with them to reduce anything, you know, you know, any impact that we can. I would like, as a final point, just to say, you know, one of the things I've learned is traffic is all relative. The people in Brown Summit think that the traffic in Greensboro is horrible. The people in Greensboro, you know, think that the traffic in Charlotte is horrible. The people in Charlotte think that the traffic in Atlanta is horrible, and so on and on and on. And sometimes adding three cars to the road in front of your house seems like a lot of traffic. But in the big scheme of things, you know, our, our experts working with GDOT and NCDOT have determined that, you know, this, this use will not create a dangerous situation. It will continue to allow appropriate and acceptable levels of service. And importantly, it's a lot less traffic than a residential subdivision, and it's 60% less traffic than what we're currently allowed to do currently in, under the county zoning. So we feel like this is a move in the right direction. So I'd be happy to take any other questions that you may have.
Any questions from the commission? All right, you have a minute and 17 seconds. If you, if you're finished, we'll go to the opposition. Okay, so we'll have the rebuttal from the opposition, you have up to five minutes.
Chair Maggott, Thomas Smith is on line to speak in opposition.
Okay, so let's hear from, let's hear from Thomas first, thank you.
Can you see me now? Can you hear me?
We, one minute, we'll be able to see you, hopefully.
Okay.
There you are.
Yes, okay, I'm Thomas Smith. I'm probably as close as Marley Drive. I'm on the other side of the development, I'm at 715 Knox Road. All of this affects me because I grew up on that land. That was my dad's property. And I've been curious to see what would happen to it. I know we all have to accept change in life. My main concern about the property, as everyone has said, is the traffic. When publics come out here and they close down Birch Creek Road, we got the bruff of all the traffic that comes from McLeansville to this interstate. Anything that comes from Sedalia comes up Knox Road. Our traffic has tripled or quadrupled since that took place. The other issue is this truck stop up here. We were told the trucks were not going to come down here and come up Knox Road because they have to get diesel fuel. But they do come up this road. It's constant, day in, day out. Big trucks, 80,000 or greater pounds, coming up and down this road. My understanding, when they put this in, I understand, yes, it'd be better than us having a residential development, less traffic there. But the big trucks are a problem for us. So my concern at this point is the traffic issue. I understand the two turnouts that are going to be put in that will help, but it's still going to increase the traffic coming up and down Knox Road. I had a gentleman tell me several years ago Knox Road is targeted as a four-lane highway. I don't doubt we won't see that, that will come at some point. I may not live to see it, but it will have to happen. With this type of growth, that's my concern. I understand the, the owners that are going to do this, it's a beautiful plan. It's a nice development that they're proposing, and I'm sure that they will do a good job of that. Like I said, I, I'm, I'm more welcome to that than I am 500,000 to 600,000 houses over there, which would be riffraffing all the trouble in there. At least with the, with the industrial, with the warehouses, typically it'll be eight to five and we won't have, hopefully, the trouble. My other concern at this point is that we are county. If this is incorporated into the city, the city's going to have to have a long ways to come to respond to any problems out here. As it stands up here at the truck stop, my understanding is that since they are part of the city, the city of Greensboro has to drive all the way out here to respond to theft or anything going on up there. It takes their response time down. It also takes our fire department's response time down. So there's a lot of things to consider with this to be incorporated into the city. As I said, I just reiterate the traffic problems I think are going to be the major issue. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
So.
You have a minute and 21 seconds, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please state your name and address first.
Mark Wilson, 5420 Marley Drive.
Thank you.
The neighborhood interaction that I heard from Mr. Fox, it's like he's in another world. We didn't really get proper notice of this thing, I finally got five days' notice. People should be cognizant of holidays and I think trying to send these notices out earlier to avoid misunderstandings and frustration and all of that. So I, I don't think the community really was involved. In fact, I think I'm the only person that Mr. Fox has been talking to when he says, maybe he's been talking to someone else, but I think I'm the only one he's been talking to. So my neighbors really haven't been contacted, I don't think. And when you don't get notices and they come in late, it's a very difficult situation. So I, I think the neighbors have said, we don't want this, it would be too dangerous, it's going to make the road more dangerous. Those heavy trucks, Knox Road can't support that, especially with what we have now. There needs to be an improvement to that intersection. And the city recognized that when it required the improvement for improvement of the property across from the truck stop. So let's be consistent and let's require it again, or make this developer wait on the improvement.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for coming in. We want to hear your concerns, and we appreciate you coming in to speak with us this evening. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, so much.
Chair Maggott, if I may, I already spoke to the timeliness of notice question. I just want to slightly amend something I said prior to the rebuttal period. In referencing the 10 to 25-day period, I did make a comment about two successive weeks. That's, of course, not for mailing, that's for newspaper notification. There is one mailing that the city sends out, so just wanted to make sure that was clear. Apologies.
Thank you for that correction, thank you so much. Okay, so without further objection, we will close the public hearing. Are there any comments or thoughts to be shared at this point? If not, I will.
Yes.
With all due respect, I'm Aaron Butler again.
But Aaron, we just closed the public hearing already, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, there hadn't been but three houses built.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, I just want to add, read your emails, community. One thing, last year, I was going through notes from last year, July, September, well, July, August, September, we had, we voted in favor of planned unit developments for 930 Knox Road, Z26 Knox Road, and 5936 Berlin Road, you get the idea. The idea is that development is happening. And there's also, we know that the NCDOT project, which began in the early 2000s, they're still looking at opportunities for how they can improve these areas. Bringing city infrastructure to that area can make some tremendous enhancements. We are adjacent to another county that we have to remain competitive, especially by the interstate, to attract businesses and economic development. So this is going to be something that is going to be very helpful. I saw the emails about not consistent with surrounding use. Well, I beg to differ. It is consistent with surrounding use, and it's going to enhance many other areas. But with all due respect to the community, this is a step in the right direction, and it's really going to make positive transformation. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we will, thank you, Mr. Downing. You submised it well. We will take a vote, all those in favor. Oh, we have to make a motion, please, someone make, someone.
And this will be the annexation first.
Yes, we need the annexation and then the.
Madam Chair, I move the annexation.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, Mr. Downing. Okay, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes eight to zero. Now we need a consistency statement.
Yes, I'll make a motion for Z2507011725729 and 745 Knox Road, 5437 and 5441 Marley Drive. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning requests for the properties at 725, 729, and 749 Knox Road, and 5437 and 5441 Marley Drive from County CZLI, County Conditional Zoning Light Industrial, to City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City CDLI zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
I need a second.
Second, Mary Skeens.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Skeens. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes eight to zero.
And a final motion for Z2507012 portions of Interstate 8540 and Millstream Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at a portion of Interstate 8540 right-of-way and Millstream Road right-of-way from County AG Agricultural and County CZLI, Conditional Zoning Light Industrial, to City LI, Light Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, considers the action to be taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City LI zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest. Mary Skeens, second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Skeens. We'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. We are now going to, this constitutes a favorable recommendation for the annexation, the PLP 2530, and the original zonings for Z2507-011 and 07-012. And this constitutes, they are all a favorable recommendation, and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August 19, 2025 City Council meeting. Thank you, and we will be closing the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't have to let me speak. You can go home, it's fine.
Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry I didn't see you.
Well, I know you guys always want to know what's on next month's agenda, so I thought I'd go ahead and ask that question.
Yes, please let us know what's on next month.
Our current count, we think, is 16 total items on the agenda.
Wait, I can't hear you.
16 total items on the agenda next month.
16.
As well as a small...
Yes.
We'll discuss that later, at a later date, yes. There's things that are overlapping in groups of items, so it's not all that number of hearings, but that's the number of total items we look at right now.
Okay, and that's the annex part. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for a good...
Did we move to adjourn? I'm sorry. Okay, that was...
All right. I believe it's adjournment by consensus, I think is where I hear that.
Yeah.
Recording stopped.